I have to let you in, that's probably why.
Looking good, Councilor Carter.
All right, there we are.
Yeah, I see, yeah, I'm letting you in.
We are live on YouTube, let everyone know.
All right.
Mayor, we are live on YouTube now.
I see Councilor Bertrone, I know that Councilor Scott is on her way, so we will go ahead and be respectful of everyone's time, including our first guest on our first topic. For tonight's study session, again, we have two items, the first is a discussion regarding a phased approach to lifting the stay-at-home order currently in place. And then we will move on to discussion regarding the FYE 2021 City of Norman Capital Budget and the Capital Improvements Financial Plan for FYE 2022 through 2025. So for our first item, I've asked Dr. Gary Raskov with the OU Health Science Center to give us kind of some background on what we're dealing with, because we have said from the beginning that we will make our decisions based on the guidance and advice from our medical community and the experts with pandemics, which while city government, you have to be experts in a whole lot of things, this was certainly something that I've had to learn a lot about in the past few weeks. So Dr. Raskov, I'll turn it over to you, and thank you so much for being with us tonight.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for the opportunity just to visit with you this evening. I know that, you know, everybody is anxious to try to transition back to a semblance of more normal life and also to get economic activity going again. So I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you, and Brenda, if you share the slides, please. I just have a short presentation to go through, I don't want to lecture to you, but I think if I give a little bit of background, then everybody will be on the same page for, you know, discussing any of the issues or questions that you might have.
It is now, Dr. Raskov.
Okay. I don't see those myself, so.
Let me double check.
There we go.
Okay, great. And if you, if you want to make it full screen or however you want to do, that's fine. So I titled this, The Path to Reopening Norman, if you go to the next slide, please. So this is just the outline of what I'll cover for you, just one slide to just review the timeline of COVID-19 in Oklahoma. I'm not going to give you, everybody's watching the media reading this, so I'm not going to go into all kind of background. China and Italy and everything, but just, you know, what happened here in Oklahoma? What are the key features of the COVID-19 transmission? What's the role of lab testing? And then focus in on the guidance released from President Trump and the White House at the end of last week for states and/or counties with regard to reopening their activity. Next slide, please. So this slide shows the timeline in Oklahoma, and I think there's a couple of key points to note here. So it was February 24 to 26 when the US had only 35 cases and no deaths. If you go down to the bottom, as of late yesterday, actually, it's at the bottom of this slide. So if you just see, as of late yesterday, early this morning, and you think about that, February, March, April, so just about two months, we went from 35 cases to 794,000 people infected in the United States. So I think that illustrates something very, very important that we have to keep in mind. This is a highly contagious infectious condition, and it really deserves incredible respect for its tenacity in spreading. And we've seen now 42,500 deaths in the United States from this condition. So February 24 to 26 was the first case in the US where there was no known exposure to a prior travel indicating that viral virus had been contacted, contracted somewhere through exposure in the community. We had our first case in Oklahoma, just March 7, 8. And by the 13th, President Trump had declared a national emergency, Mayor Clark made the emergency proclamation on the same day. And it was 15th of March that the first case of community spread in Oklahoma. That is, again, that there was no way to trace that person's exposure to, say, China travel or Italy travel or any other place that had a lot of this virus. This case happened to be in Cleveland County, and in fact, in Norman. And it was on, and because of that community spread, that's what prompted the governor to make the emergency declaration, at least for the, and the executive order for the 19 counties with cases. I know that, and then subsequently, we had the stay-at-home order for Norman and other places, and the governor's safer-at-home order. Sorry, just go back to the timeline, thank you. And so here's where we are now, Oklahoma, 2,800 approximately cases, 164 deaths, we're running at about a 5% case fatality rate. That's the proportion of people diagnosed to die. People were hoping that as testing broadens and we get more people, that's going to come down. But I think one thing that's keeping Oklahoma's mortality rate a little high is the generally unhealthy nature of our population. People who are at most risk of serious problems with this infection are those with diabetes, heart disease, underlying lung disease, asthma, chronic pulmonary disease, and people who have suppressed immune systems or compromised immune systems, either due to conditions they have or medications they take. Okay, so in Norman, as of yesterday, 184 cases, 16 deaths. That's influenced, of course, by the influence of the outbreak that occurred in the long-term care facility. And clearly, you see that the death rate is higher when that happens. And, you know, the Norman deaths accounted for, you know, almost two-thirds of the deaths in entire Cleveland County. And you see the data there, long-term care, and that's relevant for what we're going to talk about a little bit later. Okay, next slide, please. So I thought I'd spend one minute just reviewing with you the transmission of this infection, how that happens, because this is important when we think about reopening and strategies to control it. So COVID-19 is spread by respiratory droplets typically larger than five micrometers in diameter that are released from our mouths when we talk, sneeze, or cough. And this is normal, even when you're normal talking, you won't see these droplets, but everybody releases those when you're talking. And they can travel a meter, three to six feet, and land in the nose, mouth, face of a person who is standing close to you. They can also land on surfaces like your keyboard or your mouse or a doorknob or, you know, car steering wheel or any other number of objects. And if you touch those, they stay, the virus stays viable on these surfaces for quite some time, a couple of days or longer. So if you touch that and then touch your face, touch your nose, touch your mouth or eyes, which we do unconsciously very commonly, and it's impressive if you watch studies as to how often we do that. You can then, of course, bring the virus to yourself, or if you're in close contact and your family members or others, as shown here, you have indirectly, you know, giving them exposure to these droplets. So this is the mechanism by which this COVID-19 is transmitted. Next slide, please. This is a crucial slide to understanding the crucial elements of how we're going to control this infection in our community. So on the bottom, there's a little schematic that, for the Norman audience, to me, that almost burnt-orange looking color looks terrible. And, but what it describes is the period of time and the degree of infectiousness of someone's who is infected with this. The timeline on the horizontal line shows, for example, where the vertical line is with the word infection. A person becomes infected, then they take about two to 14 days for that virus to incubate, during which time they may develop symptoms. But the median is only about five days. About 50% of people who are infected will develop symptoms in five days of those who develop symptoms. And then by 11 days, in 97%, and then about a 3% take between 11 and 14 days before they develop symptoms. Now, here's the key point, and we want, please remember this because it's crucial. The serial period, and when we, what we mean by that in infectious disease control is the serial period is the time from when one person is infected until they infect a second person. Okay, well, that is four days for half of the people with a range of just about three to five. So what you see is that is shorter than the incubation period for, you know, more than half of the people who develop symptoms of COVID infection. So this means that people are infected, and during the initial four or five days before they show symptoms, they are able to pass this on and spread this to others. We also now know that there are people who will become infected with the COVID virus but never show symptoms, never show any of them. And the best evidence for that came from that large cruise ship called the Diamond Princess that had over 600, almost 700 people who were tested and shown to have the virus infection, of whom half never developed any symptoms. And so there is spread amongst people of the virus by individuals before they become symptomatic and by individuals who never show any symptoms. And this is what poses the great challenge for us to controlling this. This is why we've had to be in this stay-at-home mode for so long and the shelter at home, because the process of just finding the people who are coughing or have a fever or so forth, and then isolating them hasn't controlled for the fact that it's spread to many other people before they develop those symptoms. Okay, so this is a critical thing, what we call the asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic spread. And that's why a lot of our strategies will be geared to that. Next slide, please. Now, we can test for this virus in the lab, although the testing in the United States and in Oklahoma historically has been very limited. I think we're about to make breakthroughs on that very significantly. We have improved that very significantly the last couple of weeks, and I think we're getting ready to do that in the next few days even further. But here is the basics of the testing, there are two ways to test for this virus. One is called the PCR test. What that does is measures the presence of the virus's genetic material in the person. The virus, this is an RNA virus, so it measures the RNA virus. If you have a positive PCR test, it means you are infected. Now, a positive test, of course, can, for the reasons I just went over, can precede symptoms. So we can tell that you have the virus before you're showing symptoms, and you will be still infectious. We can identify this way individuals without symptoms early in the course of infection. If your test is negative, we don't have evidence that you're infected, but it doesn't mean you aren't or will not become infected or develop the infection through continued exposures. Typically now, when we have people who've been diagnosed with the COVID-19, before we can release them back into regular duty, regular work and life activity, they have to have been symptom-free, and then they have to have two negative tests at least a couple of days apart in order to be cleared as not having the virus anymore in terms of shedding it to others. So that's the PCR test, that's going to be the most important, that's the test that has been very limited so far. But this is a test that's going to be very important to help us as we reopen. Now, there's been a lot of publicity lately and newspaper articles and media about testing for antibodies, or what we call the serologic test, looking in the blood to see if the person has detectable antibodies to the COVID virus. All of us, of course, when we get infected with viruses or bacteria or so on, we mount an immune response, and we develop, our body produces antibodies, and we can measure those. If you have a blood test, look for an antibody, if that's positive, it means that you were exposed to the virus weeks, at least a week, more like two weeks or more previously, doesn't mean, you may never have had symptoms, but it means you have been exposed to the virus. If your antibody test is negative, it doesn't mean that you don't have the current infection, because it takes a week to two at least, if not longer, for the antibody response to occur and for us to make a good level of detectable antibodies. So the other problem is that even if you have a positive test, and we know you have antibodies, the extent to which that makes you immune from future infection is not known at the present time. Now, we hope it will be like other areas where you get immunity from these antibodies, but we don't know for sure with this, and it's not a guaranteed situation. So that is an area of further study. All of that to say, then, that the antibody test has been getting a lot of, I don't want to call it hype, but just a lot of interest in the media. But I think the PCR test is going to be much more useful for us in what we need to be doing to reopen. Next slide, please. Now, I thought I would put down what are, in my view, the critical elements to think about as we try to manage the impact of the COVID-19. Remember, there's no vaccine at the present time, that'll be at least a year to 18 months away. That's probably a fairly optimistic timeline, because the clinical studies have to be done, the safety has to be established. It has to be shown to work and be safe, and then production would have to be scaled up. So we're a little ways away from a vaccine. We don't have a proven antiviral drug. All of you have heard about the malarial drugs, hydroxychloroquine, those turning out not to be helpful, really. And hydroxychloroquine has a side effect that is not trivial, and it can prolong, it can slow your heart conduction and actually lead to a cardiac arrest in a significant number of people. So we're not really enthusiastic about that. But you probably also have heard, if you've been also watching the business news and so on, that a drug, an antiviral drug called Remdesivir, got some very early preliminary exciting information in an early study, and there are about several ongoing clinical trials with this drug made by Gilead Pharmaceuticals, and there are two or three other companies with similar medications that look promising, in my view, are very promising. But we don't have a treatment or a vaccine at the moment. Therefore, the only way to prevent people from getting sick and really sick and dying from this is to try to, is to avoid exposure to the virus. That's the whole underpinning of what we have to do for a while. So we want to decrease exposures to the maximum extent that's possible and practical. If we have little outbreaks, and this is relevant to, again, reopening, we may see little pockets of cases developing. We have to control those aggressively by identifying them, identifying who's infected by testing people, tracing their contacts and isolating them, that's crucial. And that's both for people who have symptoms, but also for people who don't. So if a person comes, say, to Norman Regional Hospital and goes to the emergency department with these symptoms and is found to have a positive test for COVID, then there has to be rapid discussion with the patient about who they've all contacted with at their workplace, in their family, and in any social areas where they've interacted with other people. And we have to then get in touch with those people and ideally test them, whether they have symptoms or not, to know who would be infected. And the infected people would then have to be isolated, self-isolated at home for 14 days, and that's crucial. And we were not able to really do that in the early days of this infection through March and early April, because we didn't have enough testing available in Oklahoma. So testing is going to be crucial to this. Now, when we transition out of the stay-at-home orders, this won't be like flipping a switch where the lights come back on and everything's back to normal. It'll be more like a dimmer switch where we're going to phase out of this, because we have to be able to control any little outbreaks that might happen. Otherwise, the only thing we could do is go back into the stay-at-home again, and we don't really want to do that. That will be psychologically hard and economically bad for everybody. So again, I think it's really crucial that we work together as a group on the phasing of this transition back. We want to use the data to guide us, we want to be creative in solutions, and we'll have to be flexible as conditions change. And I know that everybody, I'm sure everybody on this, on this meeting tonight, is, wants to find the optimal balance between protecting the health of our citizens and our society, but also enabling us to get back to operations where we mitigate the economic impact and relieve the terrible burdens that are being placed on some people by the need for stay-at-home and social distancing. So it's a balance, and I think if we work together, we can really find that balance. So next slide, please. So the rest of the time here, I'm going to then talk about how do we do this, and I'm taking this directly from the guidelines that were released by the White House end of last week. This is Guidelines for Opening Up America, again, released by the Trump administration. And the opening up is described in a gating phase where we have to demonstrate criteria before we start to open up, and then three phases of opening. So tonight, obviously, this is going to be a little bit prolonged, so I'm only going to talk about what are the criteria for opening up, that's the gating. And then what's phase one going to look like, because we'll have lots of time to think about phase two and three. But phase one is crucial, and there are some critical things there that both all of us as individuals and employers have to be thinking about and prepared for as we begin to do that. Next slide, please. So these are the criteria, the president has designated that this be moved down to either the governor or more regional level, whether that's county or city-county or so forth, and leaving flexibility to the states and communities as to how this goes about. But these are criteria that they call the gating criteria to demonstrate is, are met before we begin to a phased reopening, okay? And the two here that really matter significantly are the middle one, the cases. We need to see a downward trajectory of documented cases within a 14-day period. That doesn't add too much specificity, how much of a downward trajectory, all of those things, they're leaving some flexibility there. Or a downward trajectory of the number of positive tests as a percent of the total tests we're doing. And that's okay, too, that's another way of talking about cases. But the top one is key, we need to see that the number of new cases every day is not continuing to increase, meaning that the virus is continuing to spread to more and more people, rather, it's going the other direction, that we're bringing it under control, and we're having less and less people becoming infected as people recover from their COVID infection. The hospitals have some requirements as well, they have to be able to treat patients with this condition. They have to have a robust testing procedure for their at-risk healthcare populations, so that they have to be able to test doctors and nurses and other people who are, you know, taking care of these patients when they come to hospital to make sure that they are okay and then not passing on the infection to other patients who come to the hospital for other reasons, for example. You know, just because COVID is ongoing doesn't mean the heart attacks and strokes and acute gallbladders and GI bleeds and all of the things that hospitals see, those just don't suddenly stop, they go on. And that's very important that we get our hospitals back functioning in a more total way, because there are health implications from those other patients not receiving treatment necessarily in a timely way also. Okay, so let's focus on the middle one then for our discussion tonight, the trajectory of the cases. Next slide, please. So this shows the cases for Oklahoma, and we'll develop, I don't have it yet, but we're gathering the data so that we can do this, and we will do this for Norman and for Cleveland County, that's being worked on at the moment. But this is a plot of the number of cases on the vertical axis here from zero to 180. You know, with the date on the bottom, here you see, you know, the grade is sort of every couple of days from the beginning of March through to just, you know, today. And so what you see is that there was a growth in the number of cases that was occurring from mid-March through to the end of March, where we went from 12, 15, 14, 25, up to 58, 80, and then 150, 160, 170. So you can see the basics of a curve up here, an exponential curve up with the appearance that we have peaked in the number of new cases in Oklahoma around the 4th of April. Now you begin to see what appears to be a beginning of a decline. It was a little discouraging to get this 127 number here today. There will be a little bit of variance in these daily counts, because they reflect, you know, tests. So it may be that there were a lot of tests sent in the last couple of days at the end of last week, and then they were cleared, you know, over the weekend and Monday, and that's why we had 127. So another way to look at this will be to look at a three-day moving average of the daily new cases, and that's what we have in the next slide, please. Now you can see more clearly a pattern here, and you can see the exponential curve of increasing cases. Just again, you know, going back to emphasize the point, look how fast we went in one month from, you know, less than five cases a day in Oklahoma to 147 every day. So this virus can get out of control, and we can really be back in a problem where the only way to control it is by the shelter at home if we don't, you know, do our reopening properly. Now, when you look at now what's been happening since about April 4 to April 6, you do see that, I think most people would say that clearly shows a downward trajectory, and we'll hope that over the next 10 days, that'll continue to progress downward. I think that we need to show that this applies also to Norman and Cleveland County, and we'll be bringing those curves and showing those to the mayor's EOC Operations Group. And importantly, we'll do that with and without the nursing home cases contained in that data, because, you know, the nursing home is easier to control, because they're tragically, the outcomes are worse, but they flow in and out of that. Nursing home is controlled, and that doesn't reflect community spread, really. But what we're concerned about with the reopening, as you do, you know, restaurants and recreational facilities and various other things, stores and retailers and so on, that we're looking at what's spreading in that community amongst people who are doing those interactions. Okay, so we'll look at it, we'll look at Okay, so we'll look at it. We'll look at the data very carefully. But there does appear to be this downward trajectory that's happening. And we wanna see that sustained, I think, for the rest of the time to the end of the, uh, stay-at-home order. That is a requirement really for us to begin phase one of reopening. Okay, next slide, please? Oh, what that, sorry, go back just for a moment? I will say what this clearly also shows was that the actions taken in Oklahoma, uh, both at the city-county level and certainly, uh, Cleveland County, Oklahoma County, and Tulsa County are driving the total number of cases. But several other counties had quite a few cases. So the actions taken around twenty-three, four March, when we were still on the upswing here, uh, took a bit of time to have their effect. But it's clear now that the stay-at-home and the social distancing have had an impact to up this curve and reverse the direction to us now having a, a downward trajectory. Next slide? Okay, so the guidance in the White House includes guidance for individuals regardless of the phase of reopening, guidance from employers, we're gonna show that. And then we'll talk specifically about what we have to do in phase one. So all of these are the common sense things that have been presented, vigorous hand washing, hand sanitizers, uh, avoid touching your face, sneeze or cough into the tissue or inside of your elbow. If it's into a tissue, throw it away, wash your hands, disinfect frequently, cleaning surfaces, et cetera. That'll be important. But the one I put here in bold is crucial. And I think that this is where our employers can be really, really helpful to us. Um, and I think many of us will have variants experience, various experience with the extent to which our general public has been wearing masks or face coverings. Um, the CDC came out with the recommendation that everyone do this. It's to avoid us spreading to each other. A mask, a simple surgical or mask or a, um, uh, or a face covering that's self-crafted, um, will help us from, from, from spreading our respiratory droplets to others. That's the main goal of it. So, this is gonna be very important. And, um, we were discussing amongst us, you know, I've, I've been out to get crucial groceries or medications or other things. And, and it's been a varying degree to which we've seen the general public complying with this. But I think, um, masking ourselves, uh, while we're out doing things as much as we can will be very, very important. People who are sick with symptoms, and it's a range of symptoms, doesn't require fever. Quite a number of the patients don't have fever, so it's not only fever, it's fever, it's cough, certainly shortness of breath, but there are a number of other symptoms, fatigue and tiredness and so on. Um, one that's turning out to be, um, interesting and somewhat, uh, uh, predictive is if you feel a, a loss of taste or smell, uh, uh, associated maybe with a fever or with a cough, uh, that's, that should be investigated. Uh, and you should get medical, uh, care and tested probably. So you, people who feel sick shouldn't come to work. Of course, that's, that's a challenge. So we'll need our employers to really help with that. That's, uh, that's crucial. That's important for low-income people or lower-income people who don't have a backstop of, um, you know, a, a plan that allows them to be off work and still be paid. Um, but it's really, really important that we keep those people home and isolated. Next? So these are the White House guidelines for the employers, again, social distancing um, and appropriate protective equipment. But within, to the extent that people are gonna be coming physically back into work, um, keeping six feet or more between people during meetings or in their normal workspace setup uh, and so on. Um, here, disinfectant and cleaning, uh, common high-traffic areas. That would be important. Uh, business travel, uh, recommendation will be to keep that to absolute minimum and, and really don't undertake non-essential travel at the moment, um, out of state. Um, but, you know, here, um, you know, uh, monitor the workforce again, if people are developing symptoms and so on. They need to be at home and not come back into the workplace until cleared by a, a medical provider. The bottom line is one that's really important and where we're gonna work together, and I'm sure we're gonna get questions. But, you know, the way this guidance is put it, puts some onus on the employers to have policies, procedures for contact tracing and following employees who test positive. Now, I think it's not gonna be realistic for, um, every small business and other group to develop their own approach to contact tracing. So, um, but if you help us, I can tell you the Health Department and, and we at OU are working on this as well. Uh, we will, we will work together to help because this is gonna be a crucial, crucial, um, ability that if you have someone who tests positive in your workplace, then you need to explore and look at the people that they've interacted, not only in the workplace, but in their family and in their social circles. And that takes, uh, people dedicated to that. A lot of that can be done by phone and then you get people in for testing, but we have to be able to do it. Okay, uh, phase one. Um, these are the guidelines for phase one. Uh, the vulnerable individuals, so, uh, people, um, sixty-five years of age or more with underlying medical conditions, particularly diabetes, heart disease, cardiovascular disease, lung disease, or suppressed immune systems will still be under the shelter in place or stay at home uh, for a, a period of time. They will not be transitioning in phase one. Um, we need to, when in public, wherever we are, maximize physical distance from each other's. Again, that's six feet or more, um, and, uh, really, you know, control settings of more than ten people. Um, avoid these if you can't keep appropriate distance at all times or have appropriate precautionary measures. Um, again, avoid socializing in groups of ten or more. They put here, uh, i- i- if the conditions don't allow for proper distancing. And here, trade show. So one of the examples of this was, you may have read, a biotech company in Massachusetts called Biogen, uh, just around the, I think it was end of February, had their annual meeting for executives and so on. They got four hundred people together. Um, for that meeting, and then this was from all over the country, and then they dispersed back to their as well, something like a hundred and eighty of those four hundred were infected as a result of that meeting. Um, so, uh, these are, these, these are examples of what can happen. And, um, we wanna be careful about that. Minimize non-essential travel, follow CDC guides regarding isolation, uh, following travel. Um, I will say that, by the way, these are guidelines and, and if the, the mayor and council feels you wanna be a little more strict, that's okay. Okay, these are intended as guidelines with flexibility. And, um, circumstances may require, uh, a little bit of tailoring to the needs as well. But these are the minimalist guidelines I think that should be undertaken. Next slide, please? So, businesses where you can, phase one, where you can continue to encourage telework and telecommuting that's feasible with business operations. Uh, please, guidelines say we should do that. Uh, we can, for example, what I'm doing in, in my office at OU, for example, is, um, and we have a college that, uh, have about a hundred and ten staff and so on. We're putting, um, people on a, um, who can telecommute, we keep them doing that, but we put people on a rotating, um, staff. So not everybody's there at one time, and there's, uh, smaller groups of people that are distanced out and so forth when we have to do that. Again, return to work in phases. Again, so, mission-critical people first, followed by, you know, others over time. But again, avoid a sudden return to a large number of people there at one time. Um, avoid common areas. So if you had sort of, you know, break rooms where lots of people would get together, congregate, congregate and, and interact, either close those or be sure you're enforcing strict social distancing. Um, and then, we've talked about the travel, the bottom one again. If you have employees who are members of this vulnerable population, again, um, sixty-five or older, um, or with other underlying conditions, or maybe younger than sixty-five, but with heart disease or diabetes or, uh, other things. Diabetes appears to be a significant risk in this, this situation. And, and that's a challenge for Oklahoma because we have a high prevalence of diabetes. You know, these are considered vulnerable and, uh, work to give special accommodation. If those people can work at home, telework and so forth, it would be wise to do that for the phase one part of the reopening. Okay? So, um, last slide, I think, is the next one. Um, and then, specific types of employers, there is guidance. Schools and, and organized activities like camps will remain closed in phase one. Visits to long-term care, senior facilities, hospitals will still continue to be prohibited. Um, large venues, um, according to the guidelines, may begin to operate, but really have to use strict distancing protocols. Um, hospitals are going to resume elective surgeries, um, as appropriate in accordance with other guidance from the, from the Center for Medicare, Medicare Aid Services. Uh, gyms can open if they adhere to strict protocols again, and they're gonna have important cleaning protocols as well. And bars will remain closed in phase one. Um, so then there's gonna be a phase two and a phase three if we're successful in getting through phase one with, without, um, a, um, you know, a, a significant uptick in, you know, clusters and outbreaks and so forth. Um, so, that really is the presentation I had, Mayor. Um, I hope that, uh, this was clear, um, you know, how long will phase one and go on for? Um, that's a little bit flexible there, too. I think it really needs to be probably one or two incubation periods, which means, you know, fourteen to twenty-eight days, something like that, to make sure that we don't see, um, outbreaks and clusters of disinfection. And then, then if cr- certain criteria are met, then you can progress on to phase two and phase three.
All right, Dr. Raskov, thank you so much for that. That was very informative. Again, when you sign on for local government, you have to become experts in a variety of areas. But this certainly wasn't one that I had a background in. So I hope the city council found that as, as informative as I did. Uh, do y'all have any questions for Dr. Raskov before we proceed to getting kind of an update on the public survey?
Brenda and I are warring over the mute button. Uh, thank you, Dr. Raskov. I really appreciate this presentation. I think it had a lot of really great information on it and allowed us to kind of cut to the chase through all of, all of the information that's swirling from a variety of sources. Um, I have a couple of questions on the slide about managing the impact when you listed decreased opportunity for exposure and all of those bullet points. Was that in any particular order of importance, or were you just listing them kind of as they came to you?
Um, I mean, I think that's a good point. I think they're all important, would be my answer. Um, I have the slides here on my thing as well, so just let me go back. Um, so, um, certainly containing outbreaks that might be identified by testing and contact tracing is crucial. The phased-out transition is, must happen, so that's clear. That's in the White House guidance. Um, and, um, y- y- so that, that, you know, they all go together. Um, and, and, you know, if we weaken one, then you weaken the overall strategy.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, do you feel that our current testing capabilities, not just the tests, but all the reagents and swabs that go along with it? Do you think that Norman in particular has a steady enough supply of that to be able to do the kind of aggressive testing and contact tracing and isolation that we need to do?
Um, I wish I could say absolutely yes. Um, but I don't wanna say no. It's a moving target. It's changing. I'm, and this answer must be incredibly frustrating for you. It's very frustrating for us because we've asked this question every day and, and it's evolving. Um, so, you're quite right. One of the challenges is even if we have the machines in the labs stood up and ready to go, getting the swabs and their chemicals and all of that is a little bit of a challenge. I can tell you there's some great work and, and people working on this. And I'm hoping that, uh, later this week or early next week, OU will be, in collaboration with the Oklahoma Medical Research Foundation, O M R F, will be able to stand up a lab with much greater capacity. So we will help Norman. Of course, I've already said, you know, we didn't even talk now about reopening the university, and that's obviously relevant to Norman's activities. And, uh, so, we have to have a plan, just like all of the employers in Norman do. And, and we're gonna need to have pretty substantive testing capacity. So OU, I think it's reasonable for me to say that OU will be there to be helping Norman with this, with this effort uh, from its labs and so forth.
Great, I really appreciate that. And just a, just a couple kind of shorter questions. Um, do you believe that we are testing enough per capita today to know if we're really on the downward traject- trajectory that it looks like we're on?
Um, we are not testing enough per capita. But the, um, number of cases we are looking at are symptomatic cases. And then what we can also look at is, as the testing broadens, we can look at the ratio of positive tests to total tests and see how that's progressing. And, um, just from some experience, because I chaired the board of the Health Department for Oklahoma City County, um, they've been able to step up their testing fairly significantly. And we've seen our ratio of positives drop from about ten percent to five percent very, very quickly once more testing is done. But from a per capita point of view, we should be doing, experts nationally say, we should be doing about three times as much testing as we're doing right now. Um, but we haven't been. But the crucial thing in the reopening is anyone who has appropriate symptoms, we have to be aggressive, get them evaluated, tested, and all their contacts traced and tested quickly. That's the, that's the key thing.
And my worry is also about the asympt- there, the rate of asymptomatic, uh, infection and therefore the rate of asymptomatic spread. Um, because I happen to know that there are people who do very, very close personal care work, especially for, as an example, members of the disability community. And they may not be experiencing symptoms right now, but the nature of their work is very up-close and personal, and there is no way to socially distance themselves. And so, they do not have a way to protect themselves or their numerous clients if they are asymptomatic. Uh, because just because they're asymptomatic doesn't mean that the people they give it to will be as well. So, I am very concerned about the fact that we're not able to test people who are asympt- possibly asymptomatic or working in a field that is conducive to spread. Uh, so that's a concern of mine. I have one last question.
They would qualify as, as healthcare workers though, so, so, or a- at least would need to have a plan. W- w- so first of all, they need adequate amounts of personal protective equipment. And that's also been an issue. We didn't talk about that today.
Right.
But, but they need to have that badly, and that's important. But, th- there could be, um, again, as we, a- as we have access to more testing, there could be serial testing in some of those people. Maybe we test them once a week or, you know, something like that to make sure they're not becoming infected. And if they are, we have to take them out of the workplace for a period of time and show that they're no longer infected before they come back in.
Right, right. I appreciate that. And I have one last question. Um, how do you view the Institute for Health Metrics and Evaluation recommendation that Oklahoma wait to be until June fifteenth to begin phased reopening? Um, they listed a lot of the same kind of gating requirements that you did. Uh, they seem to be fairly in line with that, but they believe that we should not start a phased reopening until the infection rate drops below one, one case per one million people. So how do you view their measures and their metrics kind of in response to kind of what we're looking at?
So I think that that's a very reputable, incredible group. And the person who leads that is a renowned expert on this modeling. And I think if we had, you know, if we, if, if I, if, if it was just easy to say, uh, that would be a great thing to do. But I think, you know, practically staying closed until June, again, if you talk about the balance about health and the economic impact and, and the other impact of, you know, getting hospitals reopened and so on for other people who need healthcare, it's probably not completely practical. So I don't have a problem with their science. But public health is always the balance between the best science and the, the practical and the policy aspects of things. So if we can find the right balance, that's what we want to try and do.
I completely agree. Thank you so much. I'm sure there are going to be questions from others, so I'll, I'll release it back.
Mayor Clark, uh, Dr. Carter would like to ask a question.
Hi, Dr. Ross Cobb. Thank you so much for your time and the effort on this. I'm a large animal veterinarian, so I'm a little bit familiar with infectious disease outbreaks. And um, you know, one of our first classes, I think the first class in vet school was immunology, and we started talking about herd immunity and second spikes and things like that. So I just wanted to, if you wouldn't mind elaborating on the role of your concern about a second spike, I guess that's the phased approach that we're doing. And what's the value of herd immunity in, in this situation with COVID nineteen?
Yeah, well, um, of course, if we had herd immunity, then we probably wouldn't be getting a second spike and other things. So um, we don't have herd immunity right now as best we can tell. That's, that will be the value of antibody testing. That'll be the most valuable part, which will give us a reflection of what the likely immunity is in the society. And there were a couple of studies released recently. I'm not sure, let's assume that we have the antibody testing working properly, and I'm not sure that is the case yet. Let's, for the moment, assume that it's working properly. Recent studies suggested a positive rate of only like about one and a half percent or something like that. So um, in order for us to think we would have herd immunity in our population, we would need probably in the range of sixty-five to seventy percent of people to show antibodies. So, so right now we have a susceptible population and not a herd immunity. That's the key. That's why, that's why, that's why we're susceptible to this, you know, resurgence of this. If we, if we just go back to not taking protective measures. And I think one of the, I want to emphasize, I think one of the most significant things we can do, Catherine's point about asymptomatic people again, is for us to, all of us, when we can, to wear masks or face covering. And for the, for the purpose of not spreading to others, right? It will protect us. We don't need an N ninety-five for that. We just need the regular mask. Or there are a lot of guidelines about homemade masks and so on. And, and, because we don't have anywhere near herd immunity at the present.
Is there anything that we as, as uh public servants in, in a, in a city can do to aid you and your team in two things? One would be testing, and two would be trace backs. Is this a role that uh our public health or our pi- uh police and fire departments, those type individuals might be able to help? Because I know it would be, I would assume that in a perfect world, to have a more surgical approach than a shotgun approach is better, you know, to, to put out a fire in a location and doing that with trace back. It seems like what's been, that's, that's what's been missing to a certain extent.
Yeah, I think, I think these are great points, and yes, I think police and fire could be fantastic helpers on this. But they also have a lot to do. But I think that we could, if we could deploy, we'll need people, quite a lot of people to be able to participate in the contact tracing. I think we will collaborate with the Health Department, Cleveland County Health Department, Oklahoma State Department of Health. And I talked this over with the interim state epidemiologist. Have a strategy, it's pretty quick training about what, you, you know, there will be a standardized form that would be done over the phone. And having, you know, people who could help with that effort. I, I don't want to underestimate how many people are going to need to be able to do that. So your ideas are great, and people who want to come together and, and do that in a coordinated collaborative way. I think it's important to coordinate and collaborate rather than everyone to try and go about doing their own thing. Because we need to get all the data into a central location so we can monitor it and know what's going on.
What about testing? Is there anything we can do as a city to facilitate the increased testing?
If any of you have personal contacts or connections with the companies that make these materials and other things that could help us move up the, up the queue for these supplies and orders that now's the time to call those in if you have those. Really, really important. You know, because it's been some of those supplies that have been limitation. But if we have the supplies and, and if the, if things work out with this new, new machine and things, then I think we'll, you know, PCR testing capacity should increase significantly. But any contacts with testing companies and with companies that provide supplies would be most useful.
So it really is a supply problem. I, I almost, I still am dumbfounded by that. Because, I mean, the, the hospital showed up at our place three or four weeks ago and got all of our virus isolation swabs that we use on horses. And, and I almost thought it was a joke, you know, that uh, or, or just like, okay, well, they'll, they'll be in in a couple of days, but we need them today, you know? So it's really a backlog of things as simple as that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Unbelievable. Unbelievable. Okay, well, that uh, that sums up it again. Thank you so much for your hard work. Your information's invaluable. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks for your service.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Mayor Clark, we have Councilmember Scanlon next.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Dr. Itoo, thank you for this valuable information. One of your comments struck a chord with me, and that's your experience, I think, with Oklahoma City County. I'm wondering about the homeless population in terms of reaching them, testing them. Do you have, have you participated in any discussions either with Cleveland County or Oklahoma City County uh on, on such a thing? How do we reach that population? Because they're certainly in a position to, if they're infected, they can certainly spread this as well.
Yep, very important. I've, uh, I've not been in the detailed operational discussions about that. I know that, that has been considered at Oklahoma City and that there was even, I think, some testing begun. But, but it is a, a significant issue, but I personally have not been in the operational discussions.
Uh, and, and I, I've not heard, I mean, I, I've talked to some people who are involved in working with the homeless i- in, in Norman, and I've not heard of any particular cases. I know that food and shelter exercises, a lot of, of cleansing and social distancing and all of those kind of protocols in their contacts with, with folks, but they only reach a small portion. And, and this is something that I, I think is important, that needs to be discussed uh and would be interested in anything that you or anybody else who may be listening has to say about this. I think it's a big deal.
Yes. No, it's very important, and unfortunately, as a lot of things, these sometimes don't get the priority they should.
And I would hope, just as a footnote, I, I, I liked your, your statistics. I, I have a limited background in, in analysis and statistics, and I, I was asking for the, the three day moving average before you presented it, so I was happy to see that. And, and would be interested in, in seeing that information on a continuing basis, particularly as it pertains to the county and the city. I think that's pertinent information for us. So I thank you again for, for, for your presentation and your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. We're working on that exact information. That's what really you need for Norman and for Cleveland County to make the decision. And I think the moving average was crucial because in the, you know, we were being subject to the fact that the, there was backlogs of testing that might be cleared. So an individual data point from one day wasn't kind of showing.
And that's, that smoothes it out. It, it gives you a better trend information.
Yeah.
Dr. Raskov, building on that, we know that, you know, we're closely located. We're, we're the metro area. That was, you know, kind of my heartburn about all of us not taking the uniform approach because there's no walls around our city. So I, Mayor Holt has been reporting the OKC metro area numbers. Is that something we should be looking at, or do you think we're safe focusing on Cleveland County?
Well, I mean, we should look also at Oklahoma County and he, we can, he, I mean, I think he's been looking at the metro numbers because they were concerned about what's covered by the proclamation and that, that technical detail, right? And then one of the county commissioners requested our health department put the resolution that his proclamation applied to some other outlawing parts of the county not covered by it and those details. But I think that, I think the, the Oklahoma County, Cleveland County and Norman City data will give you what you need to make the decision. But your point is right. I mean, just until we all went into this stay at home, I myself was, you know, between Oklahoma City and Norman at least twice a week for teaching my classes at OU. So um, yeah, we travel back and forth, so it's, it's very relevant. But if we look at those three, I think that'll give us what we sort of really need to know.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Councilmember Petron.
Councilwoman Petron.
Hi, thank you so much for joining us this evening. I was wondering if you could tell us if OU is planning to go back to in-person classes in the fall and what their plans are for football season with respect to all this COVID stuff?
Yes, um, that's being worked on. I can't make any announcements that would, and I certainly don't speak, you know, for the full university. We wait for President Harris to make those announcements. But um, but I'm very much involved in working with the people at both the Norman campus and the health sciences on developing those policies. So it, I can tell you, you know, a few general things. First of all, there is a desire to return in some way to classes in person and to bring students back and all of those things for the fall to the extent that it's feasible and safe and within these guidelines. And um, so that's being very worked on, and I've seen some documents about ideas for how we do that. Because, you know, there are some classes which are two hundred and five hundred people in one class. Uh, and in my classes, my two classes in public health both have more than eighty students, and they're not distanced. So we're going to do creative things to, to fix that. But there is a desire to bring back some form of in-person classes, to bring students back, all of those things. And it's being, and, and it's just a matter of figuring out how to do that in accordance with the guidelines and, and safety.
Can I jump in and ask if we had a spike of cases in Norman, would that impact OU's decision?
Uh, I think it would be, they could. Sorry, the video froze there for a second, so I didn't hear the whole question.
The, the question was, if we had a spike in Norman, would that affect OU's decision to bring back thousands of people that helped fuel our local economy?
I think it would be taken into consideration in the decision, of course. You know, I'm, I'm not so worried about Norman creating a spike and and, and going on to OU. I'm actually worried about, about OU bringing a bunch of people back that then fosters a spike, uh, to be honest. So, yeah, but, but we're going to have to look at that very carefully.
And so I have several questions, but what about with respect to football games, eighty thousand people in a stadium?
Uh, no decision's been made about that, and it has, uh, it's probably.
Double A period has, any decisions been made on behalf of the Big Twelve or NCAA?
Not aware, I'm not aware that the NCAA has made any decision. I did see a communication that I thought was quite good, which was, I think there was a general consensus, and I don't know who put this out, whether it was NCA overall or the Big Twelve or the ADs or what. But they did say that they didn't want to bring athletes back ahead of bringing other students back. In other words, they wanted to have some sort of equity about all students, and they didn't want to give that impression that athletics was more important. But beyond that, there's not been any, any decision. And um, I just, interestingly, this will be probably, just for a variety of reasons, one of the most challenging things to deal with. You can imagine eighty thousand people in Memorial Stadium is not the optimal thing for controlling COVID spread.
Right. Um, I noticed that on phase one, it didn't have an age for what was considered vulnerable population.
Right. It, um, general information on that is, so it's not hard and fast sixty-five, but I think that's where you, you, from most of the data, you begin to see a change in the, in the case fatality rate. But I think a person who's, you know, sixty but has a history of heart disease and high blood pressure would be considered potentially vulnerable. Or diabetes, this is one of my worries about Oklahoma because we have a high rate of diabetes and a high rate of obesity. And people who may have diabetes and don't even know it, or pre-diabetes. So um, that's going to be a little bit flexible, but I think we, we can maybe put some more specifics around that. It's really if you have underlying, if you have hi- high blood pressure, diabetes, underlying heart disease, cardiovascular disease, lung disease, or you take immunosuppressive medicines or you have a condition that suppresses your immune system.
Okay. Um, okay, so we've been receiving different kinds of comments in our various Facebook ward pages. And um, a few individuals in particular have been cheering for herd immunity. Just open everything up and hurry up and let everybody get exposed and develop that herd immunity. Could you speak to whether or not that would be a, a safe or helpful idea?
It would be a very unhelpful idea. Because um, you know, in that process, people will die who, whose death otherwise could be prevented. And, you know, I think that every life is, is important. And um, it will be the older people more preferentially who are going to be affected by that very significantly.
Okay, and kind of as a follow-up to that.
Young people, there, there are, I'm impressed with how many of my students have health issues that need them to miss an exam or other things, and they're nineteen and twenty years old. And they could be very vulnerable also. So we have to think broad community about this. And, and really, you know, I think one thing we, the Oklahoma standard to me means we take care of and protect the vulnerable.
Thank you. Um, kind of on a follow-up to that, and also in relation to Councilmember Carter's line of questioning on antibodies and herd immunity. There's been quite a few studies and um, ongoing, I understand, in South Korea as well as in China and elsewhere about reactivation that they're seeing or whether or not antibodies are sticking around as long as they would hope. From what it, you know, we don't know whether or not it's going to be a full year that you have. From what it, you know, we don't know whether or not it's going to be a full year that you have immunity from it. Can you speak to whether or not we can? How effective is antibody testing and how long can we expect that our population would be immune from the virus once they have tested positive for carrying the antibody?
Right. So we completely don't know. And I mean, it's early days and we just don't know that. So not a very satisfying answer for you, I'm sure. But that's one of the key scientific things we don't know. And that's why the antibody testing at the moment will be of limited value in making decisions. If if we knew you had immunity for even a period of time, we knew that definitively. And then we knew, you know, who was antibody positive or not, that could help us in determining, you know, what they do and and so on. But we just, we just don't. And and I think because there's bigger numbers and other things from Korea, China and so on, we'll we'll learn some things from them fast, but we just don't know at the present time.
Thank you. Um, okay, you underscored that face masks would be an important element to this, but you didn't go so far as to mandate them as part of phase one. As a as the mayor is making our decisions on next steps, do you think that it would be appropriate to mandate face mask wearing in public? And would that be helpful to help stave off further infection?
The masks will absolutely be very helpful. I always think a community, things are complied with more and more effective when people come to the conclusion together and do it. And that's why I emphasize that. And that's in the guidance for employers. So, you know, if small business owners, if restaurant owners, if other people say, you know, what can we really do to help us reopen in a good, safe way? Because we're hurting economically and we got to get open and all of those things, retailers, others. The way they can help is require their employees to do it. Then the mayor doesn't have to order it, right? I think that would be, that would be great. That would be a way that employers could really, really help as as a collective on this. And, you know, get us to do that because Mayor and I were talking, we both, we had different experiences going to pick up takeout food where the different restaurants, one was complying and all the employees were masked, doing a great job. And another one wasn't doing, you know, wasn't wearing masks and doing that kind of thing. So if our employers can really do that with their employees as a as number one thing. And then if we as citizens, if we can get the message out and if our council really communicates this and, you know, all your people you're talking to, that we, this is something every citizen can do to contribute to it by taking that very seriously and complying with that. That would be the way to go about it. And I think would be would be received better than having to order it.
Okay. Um, okay, so we we got the 14, we understand the 14 day watching the charts and the numbers that decline essentially. What is the, how many days of if under we're operating under phase one and all of a sudden we start seeing the numbers going up? How do we know when we would need to pull back? What is the guidance there? How many days of increase of cases or whatever that we might need to do, the mayor might need to do something about that? It just, it doesn't seem like there's a, this is how you'll know if phase one isn't going so well and you should probably act pretty quickly.
Yeah, I think that I think that certainly, you know, we can, we can evolve that a bit more specifically over the next week or so and have that. I think it's a great point. We should have a little more specificity around that. Definitely. But I think if you saw, if you saw, you know, the the number of daily cases turning up and then increasing and showing, you know, more and more increases every day, you wouldn't let that go for for more than a couple of days, few days.
Okay, and this is my final question. It was a great interlude into it. If if we know that our supplies for testing has severely hampered our ability to mass test, how how do we know that the data that we're relying on now is sufficient to even enter into phase one?
Again, it's, there are estimates about the number of individuals who are asymptomatic. We don't, we don't, we know that there can be asymptomatic transition. We don't know the maximum extent of that in the population. But we do know that that place that that if we test aggressively when we see potential cases, then, you know, we can likely bring it under control. We have good experience of that from, say, Singapore and Korea, for example. So the real problem early with us was that we were not able to test contacts of cases who were not showing symptoms, right? That was that was the key. We can at least do that now and 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 isolate them.
Just really quickly, anecdotally, Dr. Raskov, I don't know, I can't speak for anybody else. But I know that I know of several people who would have liked to have gotten tests. In fact, we all know one for sure and his family. Who very likely, they don't, they're not in these numbers because they couldn't get tested. But they they all had it. And so it's, that's my concern is not just asymptomatics, but that if if supplies aren't there and if they can't get tested, then I'm concerned that the numbers are even something that we can trust right away. And that, you know, there those people, their contacts have not been traced because they're not in for this terminology of what you've shown us here, they had to have been tested to be confirmed. So that it it feels like that we're a little bit putting the cart before the horse if all of the triggers that we're relying upon seems to fall back to testing and we aren't, we don't have the ability to do mass testing.
Well, it's, it's, we we've tested very significantly symptomatic cases, people who present with symptoms, right? And we're seeing a change in that. There's no question there's going to be a lot of asymptomatic people in the population. They, some of them, not all of them, but some of them will have the potential to spread the virus because not every asymptomatic person who's infected is spreading the virus up for all the time. There's a limited time probably when you're spreading that. So at least by detecting and and isolating symptomatic people. And I think your case were people who had symptoms or a group of people and they even they couldn't get tested. But by 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 aggressively testing symptomatic people and their contacts, whether they're symptomatic or not, we can remove a huge amount of the transmission. That's the best we can do beyond, you know, testing everybody in the population, which really is not feasible right now. But that's really because of where we're at, the only, only only really hope we have to to deal with this.
Thank you.
There's no other mechanism until we get a vaccine.
Thank you.
We have Councilmember Hall.
Thank you so much for your presentation and all of the really solid science background and data-driven recommendations to all this. Many of my questions have already been addressed, but I still have quite a bit of concern about just our capacity for the things that seem really important to be able to move forward. And that's the the things that you mentioned, that the testing, the contact tracing and the antibody, you know, accessibility to the antibody testing too. And some questions about the reliability of of the antibody tests that are available. And so I I know you've addressed this to some extent, but what kind of capacity do we have to have? Because I I think we're still under testing and you sound encouraging by, yes, we're having more tests available. But how, like days, weeks, you know, how far out are we to having anybody be able to get tested? That things they need to be tested? Because one of the questions I had related to Councilmember Petron is anecdotally, I think we all have stories about people who likely would have tested positive if they'd had access to a test. And I'm wondering, if you could clear this up for me, everything that I've seen about getting tested is that you have to have shortness of breath, fever and a cough. Those aren't ors, those are ands, or known exposure to another patient. Is that still the case? Because you mentioned the most interesting symptom that I've I've seen mentioned over and over again, and that's the loss of taste and or smell. And so if you only have one symptom or two symptoms, can you be tested right now?
Again, so I think this is an evolving area. I don't, you know, I'm, I don't set the policy for who can access testing. But I think what I'm saying is it's got to be, I'm in agreement with you, it's going to be widely broadened. And if we're going to go into phase one, the requirement is is that you are testing more and you will test asymptomatic contacts because they can carry. That's the point. I mean, so if if I developed cough and that that loss of taste and smell and went in and tested positive, then all the people I interacted in my office and other things, my wife and so on, would all have to be tested, whether they have symptoms or not. And that is what's indicated in this plan and and this phasing plan. So the testing capacity is changing every day. You are quite right in how you describe historically how it was because that was tightly controlled by the state when we had very limited capacity, right? Now, I want to underscore, I'm not advocating that Norman opened at the earliest opportunity. I'm just presenting what I think is is strategies, balance and so on because I've sensed the incredible hardship and other things that people are feeling from being at home. But if the council and others said, you know, we're not quite ready and we need to wait until May 15 or end of May and the other one other member talked about the IHME recommendations and so on, then then, you know, that I wouldn't criticize that decision at all. I think that's a very prudent thought, you know, but but so so I think it's going to be all the decision based on what we do. And I think we'll hopefully early next week, we will have more information about the testing that we can actually be more concrete on this. And I'm going to feedback that that we got to be able to tell people, you know, more specifics about testing capacity and and whether we're going to be able to do this or not. So but to the point of anecdotal cases, many people knew about. It's still who couldn't get tested. Those were still people who had one symptom or another, they just didn't meet the criteria, right? Yeah.
Right.
So so you're right, they should have been tested.
Well, and I would suspect if we have a reliable antibody test, we're going to find quite a few people in our community that will have seen the virus, whether they have got tested or not. So the other piece of it is whole issue of contact tracing. And, you know, what kind of, what kind of numbers would we need as far as people trained to do contact tracing? And what kind of funding is that going to be required? I mean, who, whose responsibility is it to train and do the contact tracing?
So there is primary responsibility at the State Health Department at the headquarter level with the state epidemiologist who's who's taking that, who's put out a call for another 300 people. And we have tried to garner and help by bringing at least another 300 people to that effort very quickly. But I was surprised, and as you noted in the slides I showed you, the White House guidance puts a little bit of responsibility on the employers. I think that means that they need to work together with whoever's going to be tracing the contacts just to provide information about who might have been exposed in the workplace, right? That's important. But yes, we're going to, this is being discussed right now because I think I think it needs to not be. So I think for Norman, perhaps a group of people together, working with Cleveland County branch of the State Health Department, you know, will have a cadre of people who would be responsible for contact tracing in the county and in Norman. And, you know, you really need to trace for every case, you need to trace at least 10 to 13 to 15 people for each case. And so there's a, that's all by phone and checking. So there's a limited number of those that every every contact tracer can do in a day and in time. So, yeah, we're going to need, we're going to need more people. We've, we're, we're pulling together a lot of student volunteers from OU to be trained to do this. And there's going to be some major step up in the number of people available to do this. Some of the nurses who've been furloughed from hospitals, for example, are going to be deployed to help to do this so that they can have some ongoing activity if they're not brought back for work at the hospital and so on. So that's a work in progress right now, happening quite quickly. So your point raises very good point, Mayor, that, you know, some of the things we need to have ready are not fully ready yet. And I want to underscore, if the council and that feel that, you know, we're not really ready yet, it's very prudent then to delay phase one. That's that's an option you have and have to consider as well. And and I didn't want my presentation to come across as advocating for opening at the earliest opportunity.
Well, I think you really summed up in just a phrase what our challenge is as a council and that is balancing protecting the health of our community and also being wide eyed about the economic impact that this is having on our community as well. But for me personally, I feel like the testing, contact tracing, antibody testing is a big key to how successful we would be when we make the decision to implement phase one. That just seems really important and that's in the continuing, you know, maybe we're going to see a steady increase over the next few days till the end of April with access to the supplies that are needed. But we still have a supply chain issue. We still do not have the robust testing that seems like we need. And the other part of that is for the employers to be part of the protocol and be able to provide masks and the appropriate kind of supplies that they need to protect their employees. They also have to have access and the ability to get those things for their employees. And so I don't know how much information we have about how easy that is getting compared to the first several weeks when it was next to impossible. So those are things that are, you know, of concern to me at this point still.
Yeah, certainly the masks are a crucial thing and will be very helpful. And, yeah, but, yeah, we've got to, you're right, we've got to have a real clear idea that the testing capability and tracing capability will be adequate. Otherwise, it's not a go to go into phase one.
My last question, and I'd just like you to comment where this would fit into any of these phases because there was, there was some guidance on public parks and things like that. The comment, the most comments that I've gotten directly as a council member is about golf courses. So if you could comment on the kind of protocol that would be necessary for a golf course to meet these guidelines and where you see that fitting into the this phased transition? Uh, transition, I would love for you to address that.
So I think, you know, um, that one, you know, would be. The actual golfing part of it, not the gathering in the clubhouse and the. After, you know, all that stuff has to be managed like a uh, enclosed space, a business, a restaurant, whatever, different things. But the golfing piece is probably fairly easy to address because you're outside, as long as you keep six feet or more apart. You don't have a big group and so you don't usually golf in groups of fifteen or twenty, so you've gotta foursome or whatever, so. You know, uh, and if they wore a mask. Should be okay, right? Um, stay six feet apart, wear a mask and and golf away. You know, and it's gonna be that, just that reluctance to do that, it the personal behavior to do that to overcome. But the actual act of playing golf should be fairly easy to solve.
So do you see that as a phase transition type thing?
I think that could be, yes. But I think the issue of checking them in, processing, you know, the. How, you know, the people who organize, okay, you know. Jones party now is tee off and whatever and all that stuff and where they congregate while they wait for that and all that kinda stuff. That is more risky and needs to be managed appropriately also.
Well, I've actually, um, it's been interesting for me to learn about how some of our golf courses in Norman specifically. Um, the kind of precautions that they were taking um, seem like. You know, I mean, they were really, you know, the, none of the clubhouses were open. I mean, the, the um. Disinfection of the golf carts, limiting one person per golf cart. So it seems like there are some protocols that could be uniformly uh, developed. And if if, as an employer, you know, and as a um. An activity, an outside activity, if we could get everyone to sign on to that. It sounds like that might be something that we could consider for the phase one transition piece.
To clarify, Councilmember, those policies were in place. It was uh, people actually abiding by them once they were out away from the golf employees is what caused the problem.
We have Councilmember Holman and Wilson, and Councilmember Carter has another question as well. So I'm going to Councilmember Holman now.
Thank you. Um, I really appreciate all the information. Really shedding some light on some of the comments I've heard about certain treatments. Still got me there? My screen went off there, okay. Um, about certain treatments, I can't tell you how many comments I've seen on social media. And even in person from folks that think everything's fine because the president went on TV and said. A certain medication is the cure, uh, basically, which we know is not the case. And I really appreciate. The information about the side effects that we're seeing uh, from stuff like that. I think it's really important that people understand that there is not a treatment and there is not a vaccine currently. I think that's really important. Um, I've, I've got the YouTube uh, livestream pulled up on my computer over here, so I can see all the comments. Um, one of the most common comments that I'm seeing is. Basically, we talk about why things like gyms, movie theaters, et cetera, would be open. In phase one, but things like bars and salons would not be. I've specifically seen a lot of questions about salons. Um, is there been a discussion about why those would not be included, but other ones like gyms? Where there's lots of heavy breathing and sweat and things like that going on in the air. But a salon and bar would not be suggested as open.
So I, I, so I think it's an excellent question. These were the guidelines written by the White House and and so.
I wanna make sure everybody's real clear about that too. Thank you. These are the president's guidelines, not the city of Norman or the state of Oklahoma. This is the White House.
Right. But but it, the front end, there is flexibility, right? So there's flexibility for you as a council. And for the mayor to tweak those. And if you find inconsistencies or areas that don't logically seem correct. Like some of the questions you're just asking now, um, you know, you, you have the ability to, to change that and work with that. And I think you raise a great point. I think if I was to try and guess, I, as I recall the slide about the gyms and so on, it said. As long as appropriate social distancing could be maintained. So an individual. Riding the stationary bike or on the treadmill, who's, you know, more than six feet apart from the closest person around them. Um, but then again, you, and and who's wearing a mask, for example. But then you have to change rooms and the restrooms and all of those other things. So those are issues. I think in the bars, there's a tendency to. Just be many more people. It's harder to social distance and you're closer up talking to people. Um, and certainly with regard to salons, um, and so, I mean, I've, I had the. The, the debate about with my wife about whether she goes for her hair appointment before the. Um, before the shutdown happened. And you know, those things where the service that's provided, you tend to be close up to the person's face. And and here, I mean, dentistry would be one, would be one of the most significant and potentially an issue. But, you know, facials or makeup or haircutting where the closeness is very close. I think that's part of the rationale. But I think you, my main point would be, look at this, this is a starting point. And if you as a council see things that are, don't seem logical or consistent, by all means. You know, y- you don't have to do everything that they suggest there. Uh, that, that would be, would be good.
I really appreciate the, that information and and response. Um, all my other questions are really answered. Um, and asked, asked and answered by other council members. Uh, I just want to add though that. Um, although I'm under forty, I'm in pretty good shape. Um, I'm in a, I guess, age demographic that isn't high risk for this as far as uh, fatality. But um, I do not have health insurance. I'm, maybe I might be the only member of the council that does, I'm not sure. But I don't have health insurance. I haven't had it since I was in high school. Um, I have never been able to afford it. And especially in a state like Oklahoma that has refused to comply with the Affordable Care Act. Um, so I don't have health insurance. My biggest concern, and I wanna make sure everybody my age and um, younger understands this, is that. Even though I may not be risk, at risk necessarily of dying from this, I know for a fact that I could not afford to be admitted to the hospital for this. Um, it would absolutely destroy me financially. Um, and I know so many other people are in that same situation. So everyone that's my age and younger needs to understand that just because uh, we're not necessarily at risk of dying from this. That if you get sick, it could cost you a lot. Uh, so thank you very much and uh, move on to the next one, thanks.
Well, thank you. And um, you know, I, I think you raised a point. I would just add as well that um. Maybe younger people don't become sick, but they go home and visit grandparents or others or whatever. And then transmit the virus to them and have a, a very serious consequence as well. I'm sorry about the health insurance. I, I hope we'll be able to change that soon in our country.
Me too. Thank you.
Um, Councilmember Wilson.
Uh, well, most of my questions have been asked and answered. Um, I did miss, I think, some key information about testing. Uh, I, I thought we had talked about Emmy having some tests recently and I, I missed what, what's going on with that. So does anybody know that part?
I think what you're referring to there is antibody tests.
Oh, okay.
And I think they ran an initial batch of like a thousand people or something, and there was like about a one percent positive rate. Which seems low. And so the question of, is the assay working properly or is it just low? For the reasons that were discussed. So the reason it might be low is there was a study reported um. From a hospital where, um, I don't have the paper handy, but a, a labor delivery ward at a hospital decided to. Test every woman admitted to their ward just to see. And they found that fifteen percent of the people had antibodies. Uh, mostly were asymptomatic. Um, so too, I believe it was uh. Councilwoman Hall's comments about this being more in the population, I think that's true. I think you're likely to see that the more of the population has been exposed. So. Um, before we use the antibody test widely, we need to make sure, number one, it's working properly and measuring what it's supposed to measure. That's number one. And then it really just is useful to tell us about the status of. Potential immunity in the population, right? And we have to solve that issue pretty soon about understanding. What does antibody mean? How much do you have to have what's called the tighter of antibody? How much do you have to have to protect you if it is protective and for what period of time? All of those things will take time to sort out, so that won't be helpful in the immediacy of the timeframe that you'll be making decisions about reopening, I think.
Thank you, Doctor. Um, and I appreciate your time and energy around this. And also I have a question that's a little more uh, generalized about our PPE. I know that, uh, as we're, I, I know that there's a lot of homemade masks being happen, happening. But do we know, maybe I should even ask Kate Bearman about this, cause she's the, the mask queen, but um. Is it, are we gonna have masks for all these businesses, even the phase one part? Do we know that part?
So the, the key thing about the masks is, um, you know, PPE that's needed for healthcare workers. Who are taking care of patients, that is a different level of mask and equipment. Than what we're talking about here for the broad population, just to prevent us, each of us from. Transmitting our respiratory droplets to others, right? So you can make, um, there's a lot of guidance now about homemade masks and facial coverings. Um, the former FDA commissioner uh, was on Twitter with a short video about how he uses a T-shirt. That he puts over and then, and just makes a facial covering out of a T-shirt. One of my colleagues said, you know, um, interestingly how that will convene with open carry in Oklahoma. Don't go into a bank that way, um, probably not wise, but um, um. You know, we can create our own coverings probably that will meet the need, the key goal which we have is not to transmit to others. But for healthcare workers, theirs is protecting themselves from exposure. That's a different type of equipment that's needed.
Okay, so what I'm hearing you say is that, say doggy daycare, which happens to be my business. If we wore bandanas on our face and maintain six feet away from our clients. The people clients, not the dog clients, uh, then we are probably going to be safe-ish?
Th- that's a, uh, that's a key step to, I mean, I'm not gonna say guarantee your safety, but that's a key step to mitigate transmission, yes.
I'm sorry, I think you, I, I have a question specifically that has to do with my busi- my business, which is doggy daycare. Um, and do we think that, that droplets on a dog? Pet a dog, droplets, and then I pet the dog, is that going to be a carrier of that?
I can't answer, we don't have studies, uh, will, how will it live on their fur and all of that. Um, I'm supposed to take my two dogs to the groomers tomorrow morning, so um, I'm interested in this as well. And um, um, you know, uh, really the key issue that way, the transmission from surfaces. Is if we are very conscious about not touching our face, number one. And about sanitizing and washing our hands. So, you know, if I was, when I pick up my dogs. I'm going to definitely, I'm just gonna put them in the backseat. I'm not gonna get all close and touch and whatever. And when I get home, I'm gonna wash my hands right away. And try to minimize what I touch on the way. So, um, but, but I, you know, I don't know how long the, this could live on their fur or, or wherever.
Well, I appreciate your, your feedback. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, um, I think that concludes all the questions. I think, believe Councilmember Carter um, had one more question. Let me find him again. Go ahead, Councilmember Carter.
Hi Doc, so just to go over, I know when I was trained about surgery masks, just so people are clear. I wasn't, not wearing masks in surgery to prevent the, the patient giving me something. I'm preventing droplets that I'm emitting from contaminating the surgery site, which is the same theory here, I assume.
Right, yes.
Yeah, so, so I think it's just, you know, when people are not wanting to wear masks, what I've said to people this week is that you're being rude. Because if you're an asymptomatic shedder, you're not preventing your transmission, even though you feel fine to someone. Like your father or someone in the public, uh, from, from like being exposed to that virus. And so, um, I think that's an important point to know. And so then my last question is about, I guess I'm trying to get my head around the end game. Of this strategy. And so I assume that, you know, COVID nineteen is something we're just, you know, going to have to live with now. Um, and that we're trying, that, 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 that with testing and quarantine and isolation procedures. We're not going to eliminate this virus. We're just trying to pro- lessen the number of cases. For two reasons, one, not to overload the medical system, so we have enough beds to care for critically ill people. And two, to keep the exposure level low as we possibly can while resuming a normal life of sorts. Until there's a vaccine and we can, or there's enough. Exposure in the general community to achieve this seventy, eighty percent herd immunity status. Would that be a correct kinda?
Very well said, yes.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, Dr. Raskov, I'd like to thank you for the two hours you have given us tonight. As you can tell, this council is taking this very, very seriously. Uh, we wanna do right by our, our public health. But also, like you said, balance the, the economy. And Norman has shown that we're, we're not afraid to be a little bit different in how we approach COVID nineteen. Uh, so we can best protect the interests of our, of our community. Um, so with that, I want to, to again, thank you for your time and turn it over to Annalise. You all may be aware that we're working on reboot Norman, which is, you know, we've got the president's plan. I hear we're gonna get a governor's plan. And then we've got one that meets the unique needs of our community. And I wanted to make sure that we had public input. Obviously, we're gonna defer to the medical experts and make sure we have the supplies and testing needed to move forward safely. But it is important to get a pulse, you know, where, a sense of the pulse of the community. And so I, I will turn that over to Annalise to, to give us the highlights. And then councilmembers, we do have another topic on the agenda tonight. So after we, we look at this. I think we'll probably take a quick break and um, your, your personal input, I would, I would love to see that. Um, I wanna make sure that we're, we're all together in deciding how we move forward as a community. So, Annalise.
Annalise, I think you're muted. One moment.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, great. Uh, is that showing up right on my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, um, we, so we did a survey. It went out on, well, more of a community input form. To solicit advice or public comment on the um, potential reopening. Of Norman following April, the April thirtieth expiration of the stay-at-home orders. That went out on Friday. Um, by today, um, at noon on Tuesday. Today, we had um, eleven thousand nine hundred and seventy-six responses. So quite a huge amount of responses. So I've kind of just, I wanna just go over, um, for the sake of time, just bullet points, kinda hit the highlights here. Um, as you can see, we got a pretty widespread across all of the wards, so pretty evenly distributed there. This question was asked as a multiple choice, and we got fifty-five percent respond to say yes, they believe we should extend, thirty-one percent say no, and fourteen percent say they're not sure. And this one was asked as a free response in order to allow residents to provide feedback and recommendations on what they believe would be effective or any input they have specific to the phased approach. And so we got fifty-one percent say that they believe it'll be effective to do phased approach, they're in support of a phased approach reopening. Seven percent say just a simple no, three percent would like us to open it all at once, and thirty-seven percent did a free response that wasn't able to be condensed easily. But I do have an overview of what that response looks like. So common themes in those responses are a phased approach should be accomplished with comprehensive testing, continued enforced social distancing, or acquired masks, gloves, unlimited building capacity. A huge number of those people actually wanted us to look at a phased approach, but down the line. What I've seen is a lot of people are still, still think that the April 30th is still the peak date. I don't know that word has got out that it had been pushed back to April 15th. Then businesses, other comments are businesses and the public should be trusted to make wise decisions for their own health and the health of their customers. And then that we are, people also are afraid that we'll lose the progress that we have made if we reopen now. So this is a common theme you're gonna see throughout all of the free response things is there's really kind of two or two and a half or three camps of thought here. One is that we just need to go ahead and reopen now. Everything is just reopen now. And I think we're seeing this in a lot of places, like all of our comments as well on Facebook and social media. I think we're all seeing this a lot. The other camp of thought is that we need to stay under quarantine and maintain until we see some significant reduction in the number of cases, like a significant downward trend. And then there's this third camp of thought that says reopen, but do stronger enforcement of social distancing measures and masks and things. All right, so I'll move on to the next question now. Asked about, do you feel social distancing measures currently in place at essential businesses are effective? Again, this was a free response to allow people to provide recommendations or input specific to social distancing measures in place. The responses show that fifty-one percent believe current measures have been effective. Seven percent do not think they've been effective, and seven percent believe they have been somewhat effective. Thirty-five percent left a free response answer, and common themes among those answers are that social distancing of six feet does not seem to be effective when people still walk by you and or are touching the same things that you're, you're touching. And so many are in support of curbside retail, not going in places where you're touching things that other people are touching. These measures would be effective if people followed them. Most people aren't practicing social distancing. People aren't obeying what the orders are, the orders that are out now. And then some businesses just aren't set up for that, and we need to further limit building capacity. Those are some of the common themes among the free responses, that thirty-five percent of people that did free responses to this question. And this one was a multiple choice answer, kind of gives us an idea of how, how people are using face coverings now. Sixty-four percent are using face coverings. Eighteen percent do not use them, and the eighteen percent use or use them sometimes. So this might also be indicative of the people that are, we may have just had a higher response to people that have, from people that are more concerned about this. So there's more of them that are using. That kind of goes along with our people wanting to stay, maintain the stay-at-home orders later. We're seeing that here, that many of them are also wearing face covering. This one, just seeing if, you know, as we're looking at maybe ME doing opening up community, testing to the community, if people would participate. This is just a multiple choice, and most people would participate. Only a few, only about seven percent would not participate. So that's good. I think that's also a common theme that we've seen in the free response comments is that people want testing and feel that there needs to be more of a community-wide approach to testing before we would have a reopening. And so then the last question, we just had at the bottom, just had a spot for a free response. And again, with twelve thousand comments, I'm not gonna take you through all those. I'll give you some highlights. I've chosen out, these are some comments that have really, I think encompassed some of the majority of comments there. So one of the comments, economic fallout is a major concern for a state and city that has such a large lower class. Continuous quarantine is not a sustainable option. And surprisingly, there's actually fewer of these comments, I'd say about a estimating here, like a twenty percent to thirty percent ratio of comments that want to just open up right now compared to the majority that are in favor of either a very slow approach or extending the quarantine. So, and then another one, Norman is losing revenue by the minute. We need to get things rolling as soon as possible. Norman's economy depends on local. Get them opened back up. That was actually, had come up a couple times, that the local businesses, smaller local businesses, people feel that they might be disproportionately affected by the stay-at-home orders as opposed to the big box retailers that are open for an essential reason and then are able to sell non-essentials. And then quite a few people, a large majority of people, I'd say, in the comments, and you guys should have received all of these in your email where you can look through all the full response as well as a summary. If you have a desire to pursue twelve thousand, pursue twelve thousand comments. The quarantine measures are to keep people safe and healthy. Right now, we have no vaccine, no trust in our treatment options, and inadequate testing. We need to keep things closed until more research and testing can be conducted and relied upon. That, again, is a really common theme of this testing. People want community-wide testing, as well as the last comment there, rebooting Norman needs to be science and data-driven. Quite a few people were concerned that we were asking them for their input. They would prefer that we take our direction from the medical community. But again, this is a good barometer for just where our residents are at. So with that, I will just close. Just wanted to give a quick overview of the citizen comments and input through this, that we've received through the survey.
Thank you. That was very helpful. And again, we, to confirm, we will base our, our decisions going forward on, on the medical data and have some science-driven guidance that will, again, move us forward. But it is important to get the barometer of the community and council. I hope you found that as informative as I did. I don't want to spend, again, too much time on this. I encourage you all to to send me your comments via email. Or we could make some short comments here, but we do have another item on the agenda. So I suppose I would entertain some like very quick comments for everyone to, again, kind of get a feel of where everyone's at. Councilmember Scott.
All right, so thank you. Thank you for the presentation and all of the information. Personally, I don't think that it is responsible for us to begin thinking about opening up the city of Norman, much less the state of Oklahoma, much less the United States of America, to basically welcome in a second wave. But, you know, I don't think it's smart for us to begin doing all this stuff on April 30th. The phasing is nice, you know, all that. But I really think that to be totally safe, and it's unpopular, but we have been, we've been unpopular this whole time. This is an unpopular thing that's going on. I think that we need to really stick to our guns and say that we're not willing to loosen the reins on quarantine, basically, until we see a very, like, very significant flattening of the curve, you know, when people really, you know, stop dying. So I don't know if that means June first, but, you know, tentatively looking at mid-May. But, you know, for the first part of phasing, but I would say that we maintain the standards that we have put in place in the city of Norman until June 1st, and then we begin phase one. That's all. Thank you, by the way.
And Councilmember Bearman?
So I, I really appreciated this survey. I, I thought it was really helpful to get a sense of where people's heads were. And I want to preface this by saying that I know these decisions are a lot harder because we're not getting the assistance at the state or federal level for municipalities, for businesses, or for individuals. It makes it that much harder to make these decisions. However, we know we don't have the testing capacity. We, I don't, I don't have reassurances yet that we have adequate contact tracing in place. That's not something that cities do. That's a county and state function, and I don't know that I can feel confident that we'll be able to track down any small outbreaks that happen as a result of reopening without those kinds of reassurances. I am a business owner. Our businesses are closed, two out of the three. So, you know, this affects me personally, and I know how this affects the employees who work for me and for my fellow business owner who is here on this call. So I recognize all of that. I know that things change by the day. Maybe we'll have some of these reassurances by maybe next week from what we've heard. But until we have that, even recognizing the impact that this is having on the community and on our residents, I don't feel like it's appropriate to reopen until those things are locked into place and with some really strong requirements about what we're looking for to potentially reinstate restrictions. Vulnerable people, vulnerable people are still valuable members of this community, as are the elderly, as are the immunocompromised. And I'm not willing to potentially sacrifice them for a faster reopening. And those who have health insurance also end up with really large medical bills if they end up hospitalized or need treatment for this disease, which has a very significant possibly permanent impact on, on the lungs. So this is something that if you do get it, even if you don't require hospitalization, six years from now, you could still get winded just walking up a flight of stairs. And so, you know, this is not something that we need to be playing around with. This is not the flu where you'll recover and be the same person you were beforehand. So I'm not at that point yet. I do think that there are benchmarks we can look for that would make me more comfortable. But as of now, I'm just not in a place where I think we can really talk about a reopening on May 1.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
I feel similar. I, I want to be, I think that it's worth our future to be cautious. It's worth not having a second moment of this where we have to do this again. So I, I want to be super cautious. And I don't think we have the testing in place that we need, you know, no fault of ours, of course. I would like to explore the golf course and frisbee golf and those kinds of scenarios. I do feel like I kept hearing Dr. Resko, am I saying his name right? Say that diabetes is a underlining, underlying problem that I, I feel like if we can have some exercise opportunities and golf seems to be one of those outdoor activities, it's not much different than a walking track. And I, so I just would like to explore those out, you know, a way to open a golf course. Because I do think that it's an exercise opportunity that can be done socially distant. So just throwing that out there, I feel like I'll support whatever the rest of the council wants to do. And I, I want to be extra cautious, but that's the one, the one that I could see maybe loosening the reins on a bit. And?
Councilmember Scanlon?
Speaking as a member of the endangered population, I don't want to rush it at all. I heard two things from the doctor that stand out, the first being the need for, for the statistics to back up the fact that the crisis is declining, and the second being the need for more testing. We have neither of those right now, and until that happens, I don't think we consider anything except continuing where we are. I did learn something at the Downtowner Business Session last Thursday, that there are some cases, some small businesses that can benefit from curbside that have yet to do that. And to the extent that we or the chamber can facilitate more of, of curbside vending within appropriate guidelines, I think that's important. But I'm not ready to do anything to change the world until we have more testing facilities and more statistics to back up the fact that the trend is down.
Okay, Mayor Clark, that's all I see at this time. No, Councilmember Hall would like to speak.
Yeah, I'll be brief. I, I think we heard a lot of good information tonight. I am encouraged by the use of the three-day running average and the trend that, the direction that that's going. I also hoping that in the next few days, we get more specific information that the doctor was referring to, that really drills down into Norman and Cleveland County. I, I absolutely think that whatever we do is going to have to be a phased transition. I think we need to be sending a strong message to our community about masking up to be able to make this transition sooner than later. I think everything that we do needs to be science-driven. And I, I think we, I don't think we're at the testing capacity or the capacity in any of those three areas, testing, contact tracing, and antibody testing. I, I don't have a sense today that we're at that place, but things change every single day. So I am all for continuing to look at the data that is available to us on a daily basis. I would like some more clarification, because I think this has been really confusing based on the feedback that I got from a lot of local business owners at the Downtowners Association meeting. We have opened it up somewhat for non-essential businesses, and I think we need some really specific guidelines there and some opportunities with all of these things that we have in place now with social distancing, limiting the number of people, you know, places that are open and doing business that are being more aggressive about how many people they're allowing into the store. But I would like to see some very specific guidelines, and if there's any way to safely allow our local businesses to continue to slowly transition into getting in the recovery mode for their business, I'd like to take a real serious look at that. Thank you.
I am back. Thank you, Councilmember Hall. I will go back and watch that portion where I think I got booted off. My apologies. Are there any other comments regarding this before we take a quick break and then transition to the exciting world of capital budget?
I'm not seeing any, Mayor.
Now I'm muted. All right. Thank you all for your feedback. And if you have any more, please email it to me. I will, you know, send out to you what I'm thinking right now. There is so much up in the air, so it is difficult to make a decision. But that's why we're doing this. I know that when you need a light at the end of the tunnel, I think if we have a plan in place and then wait for the benchmarks, we, everyone knows what to expect. And I think that will help a lot to restore some confidence in the community. And again, give us that light at the end of the tunnel during these uncertain and unprecedented times. So five minutes, go ahead and turn your cameras off or mute, and I will see you back at seven forty-eight. So uh, five minutes, go ahead and turn your cameras off or mute, and I will see you back at 7:48.
Okay, so I want one of these nice pictures like these everybody else has.
Uh, mine's the window outside. That's my backyard, I guess, yeah. I do see some cool pictures, though.
Um, I just want to let you all know that this is still going out on the YouTube feed, so anything that you're commenting is being broadcast.
All right, well hopefully everyone will start making their way back.
Bria, I think you would like my shirt. It's the Stephen Colbert United We Stand Divided.
Nice.
I wanted to give it a shout out, and then I forgot.
Mayor, it looks like everybody is back, but possibly Alex and Joe.
Well, let's go ahead and get started.
Okay, Anthony, you want to go ahead and start?
Evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Anthony Francisco. I'm the Finance Director. With me is Kim Hoffman. And this is the second of the projections of the city mayor's proposed budget for the fiscal year that begins July 1st of 2020 and ends July 30th, or ends June 30th of 2021. We've been um, in preparations for this capital improvement project budget for many months. Uh, there was a council meeting about the capital budget in November, again in February. What we're talking about now is kind of the outcome of those meetings and the input that we've gotten from the public and from various departments um, on the capital budget as we move forward. Just some background information that we have discussed publicly, uh, but uh, we will repeat it here. Um, our capital improvement budget encompasses several funds, um, several special purpose funds, like the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund has a capital component. The Community Block Grant Fund has a capital component. Um, there is the larger capital fund that we'll talk about, the Norman Forward Sales Tax. The Norman, um, the University North Park Tax Income Finance District Fund is a capital fund. And our Room Tax Fund and Park Land Development Fund also have capital components. For the coming fiscal year, um, the proposed budget has projected revenues of $88.3 million. Uh, the largest portion of that is coming from bond proceeds. Uh, the second largest portion is coming from user fees in our utility enterprises. And then the third largest portion is coming from the capital sales tax. We're projecting to spend down $88.3 million um, in the coming fiscal year. This is a bit of an unusual apportionment of those funds in this coming fiscal year from the standpoint that we're spending a lot more in the park and recreation area. And again, that has a lot to do with the Norman Forward projects that will be under construction and ongoing in the coming fiscal year. Usually there'd be a lot bigger pie, or piece of the pie uh, for areas such as street maintenance and stormwater. So the Capital Improvement Fund was established in 1976 when the voters of Norman approved a seven tenths of one percent sales tax. Um, capital improvements support services that don't, that do not have to be dedicated revenues such as enterprise funds, but they should be used for capital improvements such as things that have a long useful life or cost um, in excess of $100,000, generally speaking. The council sets guidelines when they adopt the capital budget each year. Uh, these guidelines are just that, they're flexible guidelines. When you adopt the budget, you adopt the individual projects to appropriate the money for that fiscal year that would generally follow these guidelines but don't have to exactly. As of the end of last month, our Capital Improvement Fund had a pay-as-you-go available balance of about $1.4 million. But as you see, as we move forward into the coming fiscal years, um, that available money for um, available projects goes into the negative. So if we were to draw down any of the available money this fiscal year, those negatives would become larger. So you need to keep that in mind. Um, we'll talk about some of our 2012 bond funds that have a shortfall in, in some proposed solutions that council's been talking about um, for the last couple of years uh, to address that situation. Our council received a handout that detailed the capital outlay uh, expenditures that are proposed in the coming fiscal year. And as was mentioned in a previous slide, capital outlay is about 27% of this annual um, capital sales tax allocation. The way that that is proposed to be expended in the coming fiscal year is about $400,000 for computer replacements. And again, those things are detailed on the handout that council received. But I should point out that that includes the replacement of all of the council's laptops um, uh, in the coming fiscal year. Um, the largest portion of capital outlay expenditures is for fleet replacements. We'll have a slide later on that talks about um, this fiscal year compared to previous fiscal years for fleet replacements. But $2,150,000 is the largest portion of the capital outlay expenditures. But we should point out that that is only the most critical needs for capital, uh, for fleet replacements. And for those critical needs, the Fleet Maintenance Division says that we need to spend about $8 million in the coming fiscal year, just to replace the equipment that is on the critical list. So it is the largest portion of the capital outlay expenditures, but it is less than we need to be spending to keep our fleet up to date. The remainder of those capital outlay expenditures are in the Westwood Fund and in various departmental requests. Again, detailed on the handout that council got, uh, but some general things that are being included in that $930,000 is um, the purchase of proximity reading time clocks uh, that will enable us to use the new um, the new time and um, the new time tracking personnel systems that we're acquiring. Uh, we are investing in cybersecurity appliances, um, traffic signal and display replacements that we must do every year. Police and fire equipment, replacing hoses, replacing police bulletproof vests and rifles, and all of those sorts of things are included in there. Uh, we are replacing our recreation software. The recreation software that we have right now isn't working very well. Um, so we hope that new software will work better for things like making reservations for our park facilities and for the daddy-daughter dance and those sorts of things. Um, the capital outlay budget also includes expenditures in the public transit fund. We're replacing a bus. Um, that's that $563,000. And again, um, as we move forward into the public transit business, we hope to be able to, to uh, replace about a bus a year uh, out of the public transit fund. We will um, be discussing the enterprise funds in some detail a, a week after next, if you will. Uh, but there is about $2 million of fleet replacements, particularly in the sanitation fund and, and departmental requests in the enterprise funds as well. Here's a look at some of the projects that are under construction in um, proposed for next fiscal year. We talked about those uh, back in February, so we won't go into a lot of detail here. But we'll certainly respond to any questions related to those, and I'm sure that uh, my colleagues from the Public Works Department and the Parks Department and so forth can respond to those questions better than I can. We want to concentrate a little bit on um, these particular projects that are proposed for next fiscal year. Um, council's had a lot of discussion about that transit and fire maintenance facility that we really need to get built. Um, you will have on your agenda next council meeting an item to extend our lease contract with OU to continue to use their maintenance facility until December 31st of this year. But after that, we really should have our own facility up and running and ready. We were fortunate to receive about a $5 million federal grant um, towards that facility. Uh, but we need about $2 million more. We have done a lot of work. Um, uh, Kim and her staff, Jacob, have done a lot of work um, looking through our capital fund at some projects that have been completed and should be closed out. Uh, and we can move that money um, into this project along with some projects that have been um, just kind of languishing and that we can delay further and, and kind of nickel and dime up to this $2 million that we need. Um, we're still working through that list, but we're confident that we can come up with the matching money for that grant such that we can move that transit and fire maintenance facility forward. And again, that is a very critical need. These facilities that are proposed to be built are on the north base facility, on the south side of Da Vinci Street, and on the west side of Flood Avenue, also include a truck wash facility and a fire-up ready storage facility that we've been planning and hoping to do for a lot of years. Uh, we're getting very close to being able to do those things. We're still trying to find the money. You will also see a grant proposal um, for that truck wash on your next council agenda. So keep your fingers crossed, we might be able to come up with that money, or we might be able to build these facilities sooner than later. Council has had a long time discussion about the need to move our bus transfer station from the OU campus to more of a centralized downtown location. We have explored some locations, um, and we hope to be moving forward with that. And we hope to identify some money in um, next year's capital budget to move forward with that bus transfer station. Last council meeting, Councilmember Holman um, talked about, um, he had a question about, okay, so if we take the funds um, out of the proposed general obligation bond issue in August um, for the grant money that we are um, expecting to get and for this um, matching funds that we're coming up with in the capital fund, he was suggesting that we should not take that out of the general obligation bond proposal. And one thing that we did not have a chance to discuss was that we can kind of do both things. Council can um, pass a resolution in advance of the general obligation bond issues uh, being voted on to say that if the GO bonds are approved, then we can reimburse this money that has been up fronted from the capital fund to build that very uh, critical bus maintenance and fire maintenance facility. If the bonds don't pass, then we would still be able to move forward with the facility. It's just that the money would be coming directly out of a capital fund and would not be reimbursed from the general obligation bonds. So I hope that answers your question, Councilmember Holman, that, that we can kind of do both things. To do these things, council will see some items coming forward on your agenda. To do these things, council will see some items coming forward on your agenda. You will have. An agenda item that will propose to transfer those funds, as you know. Only council can close out projects and move money between capital projects. So it'll be a really weird looking agenda item because it's it'll be kind of like that fiscal year end item that you get. When we're moving money from a lot of individual line items to to different line items, this will be very similar to that. Where we'll have several dozen projects that are going to be closed out and funds transferred, there'll be, you know, two hundred dollars here. There's twenty dollars left over in one project, those sorts of things. All of those things taken together grouped up, coming up with about two million dollars for council's consideration. You will also see that resolution that would propose to reimburse the capital fund. If we are successful in getting passage of the general obligation bond issue. Moving on then to some project status updates since our last meeting. We talked about the I thirty five and Robinson West Side project where we're. This project has been high on council member Scott's and Patron's list and for a very long time. Sean mentioned that it is included in the federal fiscal year twenty twenty one. Federal Transportation Improvement Program. So we hope that that project will bid sometime this fall like October, and we will actually start to make these improvements. The local shares being provided by available University North Park TIF funds. If all of those things come to pass, we should start construction in January and we hope to complete by about October. So again, keeping your fingers crossed, but this is this has been a long awaited project that's about to come to fruition. We talked a lot about the Porter Acres Intersection Project as well as the Porter Avenue Streetscape Project. So we're just touching on that again, there was some discussion about. Whether the Streetscape Project extended down to Alameda. And as discussed here, it does, and we'll make sure that that we have adequate funding and 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 project allocations to do that. In the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund, you'll remember that one of the critical capital needs going forward is for. Fire apparatus replacement. This discusses the apparatus that is proposed to be done in fiscal year twenty one. The air and light unit is basically a portable tanker truck. That can refuel or restock the firefighters. SCBA is what's the the chief could help me out here. But but the 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 air equipment that they use on the trucks and it also enables them to work better at night. We're purchasing additional rescue boats, a public education trailer to replace the one that we have. And replacing two pickup trucks. So that's how that apparatus replacement program is proposed to be used in the coming fiscal year out of the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund. We're moving forward again with the twenty twelve Transportation Bond Program in the coming fiscal year. You see the major project that we're hoping to 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 do is is that. Thirty Sixth Avenue Project, we did not get the matching funds from the federal government for this federal fiscal year. But we'll continue with the local share projects of preparing and 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 getting our readiness points. To move that project forward as quickly as we can. The Twenty Fourth Avenue East Project is under construction, will be nearing completion. And again, that will complete the loop that we have been looking forward to for a lot of years. We talked a little bit about the shortfall that exists in the twenty twelve Transportation Bond Program. And I know the council has has seen this presentation in the past, but we wanted to repeat it here for the public and some council members who. Have seen that shortfall that we have, particularly in the Lindsay Project and how we're proposing to address that. We have some savings from a lot of these street resurfacing bond programs. As those programs are completed and closed out, we would propose to move that those funds toward the completion of the Thirty Sixth Avenue Project. And the East Alameda Project. And we hope to get some additional federal matching funds by splitting up projects into multiple years and those sorts of things, so. The main reason of putting this slide in there is just to state that we do have a plan and a strategy for addressing that shortfall. Particularly that was created by the overruns on the Lindsay Project. The twenty nineteen Transportation Bond Program is under is 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 underway. We talked about the Porter Avenue Project, the Jenkins Project will be moving forward in the coming year. We are preparing for the James Garner Project from Acres to Duffy Street. With getting all of our local share proportions done, and we hope to get matching federal funds for that project as we move forward. On the federal side then, again. Angelo, Sean and and the Public Works Staff do a great job of pursuing and succeeding and obtaining. Federal matching funds for a lot of our transportation projects, and we hope that that will grow in the coming fiscal years. Here's some detail again about that vehicle replacement program for this fiscal year is two point one five million dollars for the proposed fiscal year. But one thing that I will point out that's kind of interesting. If you compare that just to last fiscal year. You saw that we spent about the same amount of money last fiscal year, one point nine million dollars, we're proposing to spend. Two point one in the current coming fiscal year. But we were able to replace thirty six fleet units last year and only twenty seven this year, so obviously what that means. Is that we're spending a lot more per vehicle that we're replacing. Replacing a lot more heavy equipment this year, like tandem dump trucks in the street maintenance in the stormwater divisions and. Graders and those sorts of things that cost in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. As opposed to police sedans and and pickup trucks for inspectors and meter readers, those sorts of things. And again, it's just done on a scientific basis from the Fleet Maintenance Division about what are the most critical needs. But in this coming fiscal year, the most critical needs tended to be for the 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 more costly, heavy equipment. In the room tax fund, which again has a capital component for the park development area. We have Historic Museum Parking Project planned for next fiscal year. We've talked a lot about the room tax fund in our meeting a couple of weeks ago. I have a large concern about the ability of the room tax fund to 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 meet the things that that we hope to do. And so that Historic Museum Parking Project may have to be delayed. We'll continue to 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 monitor that situation, but our hotel tax is is bad right now. There's no other way to to phrase it, and so that will impact on everything that the room tax pays for, including these capital projects. Here's a look at some of those projects that are coming up in next fiscal year, some that we've touched on already. I would touch on that Constitution Street Multimodal Path. That's that's about to 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 get underway. I know that that's been one that councilman Holman has been very anxiously awaiting. And I think that 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 we're moving forward with that as well as the adjoining Jenkins Widening Project. Here are some of the recurring sidewalk projects that are proposed for the coming fiscal year. And I think again, it's important to note that that we have several large totaling three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. In sidewalk programs for various areas, accessibility, the horizontal saw cut program. But all taken together, we're spending about a four hundred thousand dollars on sidewalk projects proposed for next fiscal year. It's a very high priority the council has set. Based on those guidelines that we have given here, some ongoing areas of the capital budget will be expended. Are proposed to be expended in the coming fiscal year. Again, it's it follows those guidelines generally speaking. And you see that that four point one million dollars in the street maintenance area that is the largest area of expenditure. At last week's meeting, council heard a presentation from ADG, our program manager. For the Norman Forward Projects. And this is something that we really didn't have adequate time to discuss. And so in advance of our meeting coming up next week, we just wanted to have a little bit more information. About what Jason from ADG was talking about. Related to our ability to keep those projects moving forward as we're awaiting. The voter's decision about the proposed general obligation bond that may be proposed in late August. And what Jason and ADG was talking about was just, okay. At some point, based on where we are right now. The architects and the engineers that we have on board for these projects will just have to stop work. And we will lose three to four months of progress on those projects if we don't do amendments to their contracts. And don't give them due direction about what we want them to design. And so he described that as a pencil's down date, and we just wanted to talk about what that meant. And I think the council had some additional questions about the cost. Of those architectural and engineering amendments that might be proposed. But what we wanted to point out was that the amount of money is not as much as was discussed last week. But in order to keep the those projects moving forward, you might want to consider those A and E projects and amendments moving forward. So the question for your direction tonight is just of these listed projects. Do you want staff to prepare to move forward with those engineering contract amendments to keep those projects moving forward? You can pick and choose any of them. Obviously, the most expensive of them is the indoor aquatic center and multi sport facility. The A and E fee increase for that would be about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The pencil's down date for that kind of coincides with the election date, so that one is not so important. But the Senior Wellness Center and the Softball Football Complex. Griffin and Reeves are pretty important, so we hope to get some direction from council about whether you want to move forward with those things tonight. So again, we'll open it up for your questions and comments. The two areas that we really want some kind of yes or no direction tonight. Relates to moving forward with the Transit and Fire Maintenance Facility. Transferring those funds from those projects and yes or no, do you want to transfer those closed out project funds? To build that maintenance facility? And then second, do you want to move forward with those A and E contract amendments? And if so, which ones of them?
Okay, Mayor, you have a couple of questions. Councilmember Holman.
Go ahead.
Okay. The. Good, maybe Sean or staff talk a little bit about the Porter Project. The remainder of the Streetscape Park and how. An email from Sean pretty details was sent to both councilor Hall and I, not sure if everybody got that, so. If you could talk just a little bit about how we're going to go about coming up with the rest of the funding to make sure we're able to do the whole project.
Happy to, council member. Again, the point here is that just to. I'll just be clear, it was a mistake on the part of the early interpretation of the project in terms of the budget. And while we never doubted that it was intended to go the entire mile from Robinson to Alameda. Somewhere midstream in that bond package, we didn't budget enough dollars to get the whole distance, so. We've corrected that, as Anthony mentioned very well. You have already approved a change in the engineering contract to to make that happen. I think you did that last meeting. And so now the challenge is to find, as you mentioned, council member Holman, to find the dollars to extend the project. Working several angles right now. One, you will have some surplus funding in the Porter and Acres Project that we already know because we're far enough along in the design, so. We're going to stretch those dollars to get farther down the corridor. We also believe that you've got some excess dollars in the Gray Street Two Way Project and that intersects at Porter, so. We can stretch those dollars to get a little farther down the corridor. And then beyond that, we're going to be looking at other contingency dollars in the twenty nineteen program. We're also exploring some federal opportunities. There's a, as you know, the ranking and rating process has changed recently with ACOG. And one of the the discoveries through that is that sidewalk projects like corridors like Porter. Rank really well, so we are kicking around right now the idea of pulling the sidewalk portion of that project. Out and pursuing a federal grant for next year in that next ranking program, so. I guess bottom line, the we think it's going to take several different sources of funding to make up that that delta. Of about two million dollars, but we feel very confident in doing that. And the design will continue on the same trajectory and schedule. We we still plan to build the project in FY twenty one, twenty one, twenty two.
It would be anticipated that the entire corridor from Robinson to Alameda could be done by twenty two.
Yes, sir, that's our intent. It makes only sense to do it at one time. The only, you know, change to that might be if the if the sidewalk project were funded with federal funds, we might have to do two different contracts. The one through ODOT, one through the city, that remains to be seen, but it would still be done in the same timeframe.
I appreciate that. The the portion between Alameda and Gray Street, there are sections that don't have a sidewalk at all. It's completely deteriorated or or there just isn't one. And there's another portion of the Porter Project that some of us talked about, and that's some utility lines. Especially how they interact with the dairy and their traffic, so. There's some other aspects I think that we would like to discuss regarding that project and councilor Hall and I both, you might have some comments as well about that. But I appreciate your work on that, Sean and your staff. I, again, the bond proposal was nineteen projects, the largest ever in Norman history. And it was a very short amount of time that we were had to put that together, so. It's definitely understandable that that could happen. And I appreciate your staff's ability to to figure that out really quickly and present us with some solutions to make sure we get that done right, so. Yeah, so another thing, the twenty twelve bond projects, the overrun. We've been over this a few times, but just for those that may not understand yet or haven't heard the explanation about. Why the Lindsay Street Project went over the way it did. And why the why that overall bond proposal has gone over budget and specifically because of that project.
Sure, happy to. Again, first thing I would say is that out of the eight projects, again, six are or will be done. Very soon with the completion of the Twenty Fourth Avenue East Project, that leaves us with two remaining Thirty Sixth Avenue and East Alameda. And those two are on budget, so of the eight projects, seven of them are coming in below the city's projected budget share. Some overall are a little bit higher, but we're getting more federal funds, so the the culprit here is the Lindsay Street Project, as you mentioned. About a five million dollar overrun on that project, very, very big project, very complex project. Approaching forty million dollars just by itself. And there are really two primary sources of over. Cost, one was in the land acquisition, we spent a great deal more on East Munson right away than we anticipated doing. But the lion's share was in a decision made by ODOT midstream in the project. Where we had originally intended to discharge the large underground storm pipeline directly into the I thirty five right of way. They're just south of Lindsay Street, and we were disallowed from doing that after the bond issue had been approved. And that caused us to to bury that pipeline or that big box culvert. And that caused us to bury that pipeline or that big box culvert nearly a half a mile farther underground, including going under Highway nine at a very high cost. And that's really that we're the biggest overrun in spending occurred on the project.
I appreciate that, Sean. I think that's really important that everybody knows the history of that. And that wasn't some sort of mismanagement on the city's part, that that was beyond our control. And we, to our credit, were able to adapt and been having to deal with the budget issue created by it, of course. And especially when we have another project from that bond, 36 Avenue, that is that we're going to have to be trying to find the remaining funding for that. So appreciate that answer. Another question I have is about the Constitution multimodal path. Just clarification, really, that the multimodal path, is that going to be done separately from the road project?
It is, I mean, yeah, you bet. Like first say that, again, the Constitution Street project, which is in the 29 Bond Program is already under design. You you have approved that contract, we're using the same design firm that's doing Jenkins. So we're doing one, well, one design, two different projects in both the Jenkins and the Constitution corridors to we think it'll work well to bring the two projects together. But before all of that was approved, we did qualify for a grant for the multimodal path, which will be on the north side of Constitution from Jenkins going over to Classen about a mile in length. And we are well into the design process. We think that project could actually kick off later this year in 2020 or early 21. So yes, it will be in advance of the road project. But we're designing the two things together so that even though they'll be on a different construction schedule, the path will work well with the road improvements. They will be done on slightly different schedules for construction.
And the road project, does that include a just a regular sidewalk on the south side of Constitution?
It does, continuous sidewalk on the south side, a large 10 foot path on the north side, of course, through the other grant. And then a series of other road improvements, stormwater improvements, bicycle, obviously opportunity through the path and so on for the entire mile between Jenkins and Classen. So the two the two projects will finish multimodal corridor.
Okay. And would you mind sending me whatever I guess, design we might have concept for Jenkins and Constitution for how that's going to work?
Happy to.
Thank you. The last thing, well, I guess one thing I want to comment on is the the Brook Street crossing. I know that's just a really relatively small amount, $45,000. But as I've mentioned, it straddles Ward four and Ward seven. And it's the only crossing in the urban area of Norman that does not have pedestrian crossing on either side of the street. And it's, you know, connects the campus to the east side of town right there. So something I felt has been real important for several years. And so I'm happy to see it's still in there for now anyway. So I other than that, on the A and E contract amendments. I mean, I want the I want these projects to be ready to go for whenever, as far as the design and everything. For the I want the schedule to stay on pace for whenever we are ready to send it forward to voters. Whether that's in August or a later date, I'm not sure. But I think having as much information and details ready to go as possible is a good thing. I might need a little bit more time here to look at that priority as far as those those that list we just saw went. But in general, I would say I'm okay with trying to get to keep the pace of these projects as far as the design of them going. So was there another one, Anthony? The guidance, sorry. You needed my
The other area of guidance related to the fire and transit maintenance facility. Are you okay with moving forward that agenda item to transfer funds into that project?
I think I am, yes. So upon any further information that would change, I know now I think I'm okay with that. So thank you.
Okay, we have Councilmember Bierman next.
Oh, now, there we go. You didn't hear any of that, Anthony.
No, sorry.
Okay, that's fine. So my first question is, I I don't remember doing these project closeouts in the last couple years. Maybe it just wasn't specifically pointed out that that's what we're doing. Is this something new that we're doing this year? Did we not have any in the last couple of years? Did I just not know about them because they weren't specifically highlighted?
You you council usually does individual project closeouts. You'll see in agenda items and say final acceptance. These are items, these are small. You either never did that final acceptance or the project never got closed out. What I was making an analogy with was the audit process when each fall you we come forward with this agenda item that kind of trues up all of the line items in the budget. And there's this long list of items that transfers are proposed to be made. And I was just saying that this would look something like that, where you're going to see a lot of little bitty projects, $20 here, $600 there. In this group of things, dozens of projects is going to add up to about $2 million. And I was just saying it's going to look like that thing that council sees in the fall.
Okay. Um, that just it that just seems like a lot of money. And so I was just, I was just curious. And so do you happen to know how many of them are ones that have been closed for a year, let's say, or longer, and we just haven't closed out? Do you know a rough percentage of how many of them?
Roughly, I'm going to say roughly half of them have been finished or completed for more than a year. And just never come, you know?
Okay, I appreciate that. And so this question is kind of slightly more general because it applies to a few different projects that we've been talking about. And it's it relates to my concern about the add-ons for the Norman Forward Engineering contracts is what do we do if the geo bond doesn't come to fruition? Especially considering we're probably facing some pretty significant reductions in revenue. It worries me to add, I can't even remember what the amount was, but I my quick calculation, it looked like close to $1 million for these engineering add-on contracts. And what do we do if we don't get the geo bond or decide not to move it forward or voters decide not to pass it? I mean, what what do we do then?
As it relates to the architectural and engineering contracts, you would have design projects that you're either going to not do or do at a later date. So you would have plans on the shelf, basically.
Okay. And that does that does concern me. Related to that, do you have any idea how much Norman Forward is short now or will be by the end of this fiscal year? And when do you anticipate being able to quantify the impact of pandemic related closures on Norman Forward as well?
As it relates to Norman Forward, it will fall out with the overriding revisions that we may have to do related to sales tax generally. But yes, algebraically, Norman would be a part of that. We think that we are about in the $3 million range of revenue shortfall for Norman Forward right now. And we project that over the 15 year life would be about 8 million. And we have been been talking about areas that that we would make that up. And we still believe that we can do that. But but yes, this this unanticipated new COVID effect does not help us in Norman Ford or any other area where we're relying on sales tax. So yes, we will be revising those projections and discussing that with council.
And I'm sure you're going to be keeping an eye on any potential second wave because that's also my concern. This fall and winter is probably going to be bad. And now we even have, you know, the director of the CDC saying it could be even worse than the first wave. So that also kind of makes me a little, I think the technical term is squidgy about whether or not to move this bond forward and whether or not we can anticipate the next year or so looking even like the last year or so did, which I know was pretty unprecedented for you in terms of sales tax. So that does that does concern me. I have a couple, these are slightly smaller questions. But this, and I think these might end up being for Sean. We did a, we had a change in contract, I think, at our last council meeting to move money out of the ADA sidewalk compliance program and into the compliance program for buildings. Did those buildings include the new Central Library? And is that enough money to make all of the planned ADA improvements and or fix fix the ones we didn't do right the first time? Is that going to be enough money for that?
Yeah, we we did, Councilmember. Again, what we were doing there was the those, there were, I think, our 11 evaluations of ADA compliance. I think eight were buildings and three were parks. We we had intended, it's in your program to do those. We just moved them to an account that would allow us to actually get that work done. We did it in the last couple of weeks. That contractor can no longer travel because of the COVID program and they they live in Tulsa. So they came here last week and spent the entire week and got all 11 projects completed for us. We were thrilled to do that. Yes, Central Library was one of those. We've I've got the report back, Brenda has it in her hands and Daryl, and we are going through that right now. I would say that, you know, there's always technical issues. This this can be a very technical area and the best of architects sometimes miss little things. But I would say it's a series of little things that are easily fixed. Some of them, I think Brenda might need to weigh in here. Some of them, I think, will be on the contractor and the design team to to make right without additional funding from the city. And some will involve some additional funding from the Norman Forward program to make that happen. Things like, I would tell you, things like Braille signage was a little bit light in the building. We we intended to do it, it just didn't get done. So things of that nature are what is in there. It's a formal report and we intend to bring that back to the ADA Citizen Committee at their next meeting as well. So they are aware of what we found.
Fantastic. And also for you, if you are ever looking to put together a larger sidewalk program for ACOG funding, as you mentioned to Councilmember Holman, the area of Ward one surrounding Kennedy Elementary and Irving Elementary, those sidewalks there, those curb, I don't even know what you call them, the curb rises are like double the normal size. It's not just, you know, put your one foot up and there you go. I mean, it's hopefully you've got some strong quads because you're really going to be making a lift to get up there. And if you are in a wheelchair or elderly or have a stroller, it is next to impossible. And that's in addition to not having the the curb cuts and the ramps that that they need to get on and off the sidewalk, not utilizing someone's driveway. They are everywhere in that part of Ward one. It's an older part of Ward one, I get it. And a lot of those sidewalks are narrow and in really bad shape. I don't think they're WPA era, but they're probably close. And they really need to be addressed. I don't know where on the priority list those are, but they are certainly a priority for me. And I haven't heard much of a mention of them in the last few years. So if they're not on your radar, I would like to put them on your radar.
Well, sure. I would just mention, Councilmember, we did get a Safe Routes to School grant a couple, three years ago for Kennedy. So we did immediately around Kennedy, you'll find most of that is better. But I understand your point, there's several others outside of that.
Yeah, it's mostly to the north of Kennedy and to the to the east, kind of in that area between Kennedy and Irving. And then my last question, this one again is going to be for you, Sean. I did not see it in this year's budget, which makes me think that it was previously allocated and just hasn't been done. The traffic light at Alameda and Summit Lakes Boulevard slash Lockwood Drive. What is our timeline on that? Because I feel like last year it was mentioned that it might have been done by now or by the end of this budget year. So can you tell me where we are with that and if the money was actually allocated?
Happy to. So we did submit that in our ACOG application this time. It did not make the cut again for some of the same reasons we've been talking about in terms of the ranking and rating process. I want to follow up on that tomorrow and make sure that I've got that right. But it came very close to making that 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 cut. We have the local funding in place, as you know, to do that as soon as the federal funds are provided. And we have, we think there's a good chance it may still come in this fiscal period or next through that same ACOG program. So I'll I'll follow up tomorrow and confirm where it fell, but it was just outside the line of funding this time.
Thank you. Can you remind me what federal match amount is? I can't, I can't remember.
Well, in this case, we were applying for the federal safety funds, which is 100% funding. So and if we were fortunate enough to get that, which we have many times for previous traffic signals at intersections, we then returned that those other dollars to the developers and others who paid it in. We pay it all with 100% federal funding. So great program, been very successful with it here. And this is the next priority project to receive those funds.
Okay, so I forgive me, I didn't, I didn't hear a dollar amount in there. Do you know what we're what we allocated locally versus what the total cost is?
Yeah, my recollection is the total cost on intersections about 250,000.
Okay. And we put we put aside how much?
I think, in fact, Anthony and I were looking at that because that was one that was on the cut list and we we requested that not be cut, obviously. So I think there's about 80,000 in that in that account right now. Somewhere in that range, I'll follow up there too.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I think that's at least all the notes that I can re, oh, no, I forgot. That's why I have the book open was because I wanted to ask about this. Okay, can we talk a little bit yet again about the Westwood Fund and golf carts? Because I'm seeing a decent amount of money in this book for golf carts yet again. Golf carts that we haven't been using for a little while, are not going to use for a little while. And maybe we'll only be using intermittently, at least for the next year. And this is kind of, again, rolls back to the whole, why doesn't the Westwood Fund pay for their own golf carts?
The yeah. That was a program that council put together some time ago to replace a third of the fleet every year out of the capital fund. And that's about what we do, have been doing for a long time to keep our fleet in good condition. Keep basically rotate a third of the fleet every year and and keep everything that way, everything remains in warranty for the whole time that we have it. I don't know what else I can say to
So can they not, can they not pay for this out of their own fund? I mean, isn't that why they have their own fund?
Not sure it's possible, but in past, for the past, oh, I don't know how many years. So a lot, when the council first put this program in place, the fund has not been able to do that. And so those qualify as as capital equipment expenditures and and that's what we opted to do.
And yeah, and I understand that. It just feels like another way to subsidize the fund without saying we're subsidizing Westwood. You know, and I I know that, you know, it's maybe maybe out of necessity, maybe they do need to be replaced every three years. But if we're going to be looking at some pretty significant budget shortfalls over the next year or so, to me, replacing golf carts is not as much of a priority, even as something like sidewalks. So, you know, I just, it makes me, you know, it's, this is not the first time that I've focused on Westwood, probably won't be the last. But it just, it concerns me that when we're facing some pretty tight budget situations in the coming years, that this fund still can't maybe, we haven't, we haven't seen if they can, because we haven't tried to fit this in their budget, but it can't, it's not standing on its own. So that it worries me that we're subsidizing that just in a different way. And if we do need to make some difficult decisions in the capital budget for this next, for this next year, that's one that I would like to see pushed off at least one year at a time. Maybe we go one year and see what we can do with the golf carts that we had. And then if the next year we need to reinstate the program, we can. But I'm not super thrilled with the idea of continuing to subsidize golf that probably won't be used all that much, especially this year. More of it, more of a comment than anything else. I was, I appreciate the answer. Thanks, Judd.
One last, if I could, one last comment. It was, it was really thought to be important to keep that fleet in good condition because it's such a revenue producer. One of the largest revenue producers we have at that facility. And without with with the carts in poor condition, then obviously that's going to affect the our bottom line even further.
Appreciate that, thank you.
I believe Councilmember Carter is next. Go ahead, Councilmember Carter. Go ahead, Councilmember Carter. You're unmuted. Go ahead. Can you? Go ahead and try, Councilmember Carter, I've got you unmuted. It's not working. Okay. I'm not sure what's going on, Councilmember Carter. Does it have to do with your headset, Councilmember Carter? Is there a mic associated with your headset? Can you use the mic on your computer instead?
Are your headphones plugged in?
Try unplugging your headphones. Take them off. One, try one more time, Joe, and then I'll. I think we can hear you now.
Well, let's take this opportunity to tell you about a new initiative with Norman Arts Council and Norman Parks and Recreation to mark off little areas for chalking on that big retaining wall north of Sutton Wilderness. You all can sign up for an appointment. So it's social distancing and we can paint the whole wall. And it's called Make Your Mark, I think. And it's through Norman Arts Council. So I know my family will be signing up to decorate our portion and I hope you guys will too.
I love it. I chalk, I chalk decorated my mailbox the other day. And so now like half of our street has these like colored brick mailboxes. It's awesome.
Mayor Clark Keane texted me and said to come back to him. So Councilmember Hall would be next.
Okay. I, I can talk. Yay. And I wanted to circle back around to Mr. O'Leary and the Porter. The, just the Porter Corridor in general. And I was really encouraged to see the change in the budget number to accommodate completing the project from Alameda to Robinson. And this is a really important project, not only for our community in general, but for Ward Four, particularly as we move forward with the reimagining of the Porter Campus in, coming along with and all of that too. And this is really been a good example of teamwork and working together to try to solve a problem. I am so grateful to Councilmember Holman, who has had a long history with this project to, you know, point out that what we voted on at the Transportation Bond included the entire run from Alameda to Robinson Street. And I really appreciate Mr. O'Leary tackling the problem and coming up with solutions on how to move forward because I think it is what the voters expected and what they approved. And it's going to be so important to complete this project all at the same time. I am encouraged by some of the ways that we're going to fill in the extra funds that are going to be needed. The one thing I would say is I do have some concerns about pursuing federal funding. Because what we voted on was that these two projects, in particular among several others, were to be completed with city funds. So I think what I heard you say was that the timetable for the project is not going to be altered in any way. Is that correct?
That, that's certainly our intent, Councilmember. We've, we've got to make up that financial difference, but we, to, to try to keep things moving. I, I misspoke earlier. The amendment to the interim contract is on your agenda next Tuesday with Kavanaugh. So accelerated that process. They are ready to go on the entire design process. We hope to have lots of public meetings and, and conversations about the project over the next year or so. And it's targeted for construction in FY '21, following the Porter and Acres Project in FY '20. And we intend to make that schedule, provided that we can put together the finances that we need to get it all done.
Okay. And I, you know, just want to say for the record that that project is one of the highest priorities as far as I'm concerned for Ward Four in this capital budget. And I'm, you know, if there are other opportunities to identify funds to contribute to that project so that we're not going to be dependent on any kind of federal funding, that would be my preference going forward. But I really appreciate you tackling the problem as quickly and swiftly as you did under the circumstances and appreciate you being as creative as you possibly could to go back, take a look at it and meet what the expectations of the voters were. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Looking forward to the public piece of this, as I've said before, and getting the neighborhoods surrounding the Porter Corridor up to speed and making sure they understand what, what's coming forward. So I, I appreciate all your work on that.
You're welcome.
And to Councilmember Holman. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back and try to bring in Councilmember Carter again.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Well, I moved back to my truck with the Bluetooth because my hearing's so bad, I can't hear it if I don't have something going on. So thank you so much. I wrote my notes in the back of a magazine. And so I think that scary times are a time of where leaders have to lead. And I think we have to be brave. I think we have to do our due diligence, you know, and plan for what if things don't work out. But I think in this circumstance, I was very encouraged by the fact that our federal government came through kind of out of nowhere with a $5 million gift for our transportation facility. And so to answer Anthony's question, yes, I would, I'm very much in favor of moving forward with that phase of the project. And I think Councilmember Holman's recommendation to allow for reimbursement from the GO bond, if that is to come to fruition, would be a very good idea. I've got a question for Catherine real quick, and it has to do with the South Canadian River Park. You sent a very detailed, thorough status update with that a few months ago. And as I recall, at the time of that email, there was going to be some lawsuit or some court actions. Do you have any? And you were going to send staff there to monitor that. Do you have any update for us on that project?
Yes, it was kind of funny, but you know, the property was owned by one party financed by the previous owner. And it was the previous owner that actually came and bought that property back. So I believe it's Arby Moore is the name of the corporation. It's the Bob Moore family, I would assume, that they've always known was involved with it. So not a lot has changed with the property ownership at this point.
Does that mean, what does that mean? So they had sold it to another entity and now they've recaptured that. So was it the other entity that was going to donate the land to us?
I, I was not privy to those conversations years ago, so I don't know. Part of the transaction of this land includes quite a bit of land in and around Ed Noble Parkway, in addition to the South Canadian Trails property. So it's, it's an interesting transaction overall, but I don't know that it's changed our position on the land at all.
Hey, Judd, do you have any, can you fill us in? I know you, in our very first meeting, when, in my orientation, you, you gave me a fairly detailed analysis of that, of their status of that project. Could you maybe fill us in on a little bit of that history?
Sure. What I recall is a long time ago, I had a conversation with Mark Moore. And they, the Moore family was interested in donating the property as long as it was named in, in memory of Bob Moore, who was the father there. The other owner, who was a 50% owner at that time, was convinced that the land was worth, in his opinion, a fortune. And it would not be given away at all. If he had anything to do with it, it would be sold at a premium. And so I didn't, I'm not aware of, until just hearing it just now, that any of that ownership has changed. But if that has changed and now it all belongs to the Moore family, then it's quite possible that they would donate it.
Might be able to provide a, what the council was thinking in 2015, if I may. Okay. So I, if I remember, there was that legal debate about ownership. I think what we were looking at was the land, I can't recall entirely, but I think it's pretty much undevelopable as far as flood plain and its proximity to the river, endangered species, all sorts of stuff. So really not that valuable as far as attractiveness for somebody to buy. But a passive nature park along the river seemed really appealing to everybody. So people thought, we all thought that could be a project that if someday, some way down the future, and we all thought it would probably be the last Norman Ford project to be done because of that land ownership issue. But the hope was through 15 years of Norman Ford, that that issue would be resolved. And we might be able to get it donated or whatever other means and go forward with that project. So that's my recollection is the land is really, can't really do anything with it. So.
Sorry. So part of that transaction was a partnership between one entity and the Moore group. So that, this is all making more sense now in that history. So that, the group that maybe was dissenting on the donation several years ago appears to be out of the picture now. So that's something we could follow back up on.
Mr. Pyle there?
Yes. Yes, he is sitting with me. His computer messed up.
Okay. So I guess though, with what you've heard at this point, what would be your recommendation on how we should proceed so that council can get just a little more clarity of the status of this project?
Well, tomorrow, our typical staff meeting, I think a great opportunity for staff to tee that conversation up. I'll be able to familiarize myself for that particular opportunity, looking at zoning, looking at some topography, some Google Earth. And let us bring you a recommendation about the opportunity to move forward. If that's still one of like I said, it's probably a new conversation for several members of the council, but we're happy to dig back into that, especially if there has been a change in ownership. Because it could absolutely create a brand new opportunity for us. So happy to bring that back to you in the next couple of meetings. It'll give us time to make some contact with current property owners and find out what their, what their desires are and maybe we can work a deal.
Thank you. You're the best. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Question for Anthony real quick. And I don't remember what slide it was on, but there was a $300,000 line item. It said Lake Thunderbird. And I think the initials were TMDL, something like that. What exactly is that?
The capital fund has funded about a $300,000 project each year for total mass daily load studies and monitoring and amelioration of whatever is found. That's just an ongoing project that has been budgeted for. It's really in the stormwater area.
Great, great. Well, just, just to let the council know and staff that just this last week, the Horsemen of Thunderbird built a whole new, used a bunch of railroad ties to build a whole new set of obstacles to ride your horses over, which is real fun out there. And, you know, that is a greatly undeveloped asset that we have. Mr. Pyle, I asked maybe sometime, when we, when we make our Ward Two drive around, and that's not Ward Two, it's Ward Five. But when we make our drive around, one of these days, we'll drive out there because there's, you know, great mountain biking trails, great hiking trails, great wildlife. You can go ride those trails at Lake Thunderbird right now, tomorrow. And I bet you'll see wild turkey and wild deer and you're 10 minutes from Owen Field. It's, it's just an incredible ecosystem out there, an asset that I think, you know, on the long term, I hope to see us tap into. And so.
The opportunity.
Took him out there.
The opportunity for us to expand on that and better promote that as part of that ongoing effort to increase tourism. Once the stay at home order has been lifted, I think we can probably use some great social media coverage on those opportunities. And just yesterday I told the police chief, I need to go get a new back tire for my mountain bike so I can go ride that. So looking forward to it.
We'll do it together. One, one quick question for Anthony again, or maybe Sean or Mr. Somebody. You always hear about, there's an impasse federally with a highway, you know, like a giant infrastructure bill. Are you, with, with a, with a bill like that, if it were to pass, is that something that would, you anticipate would accelerate federal funding for all of these highway and road projects that we are waiting on matching funds for?
Let me take that, I'll take a stab at that, Councilmember. Well, yes, again, it's, what you're talking about there is the federal highway bill. And we still have an active federal highway bill. The acronym is FAST. I forget what that all stands for, but there's been an active highway bill for the last 30 years. And each of those bills contains in it different funding opportunities. To answer your question, yes, the new bill or the revised bill, we hope that comes in the next year or two. Who knows now with this pandemic. But the hope is for more funding for states, which also gives more funding to MPOs, which then gives more funding opportunities to the Norman. So yes, that's one of the things we hope for, no guarantees. We also hope for more funding in certain categories like transit and bridge replacements. So those are the areas that we're watching in the new bill. It's been proposed and then pulled back, proposed again. I saw some, some traffic on it, email traffic even as recently as last week.
I think that's what I saw too. So thank you so much. I guess so. All of that leads me to this conclusion that, as I remember very well, the '08. I've been a businessman through three recessions. You know, the fourth one now is not, they're not fun. But I do think it's the opportunity where government rises to the occasion when private sector spending decreases and contracts. Government has the obligation at times to step up and they stepped up the other day. These checks are hitting people's accounts. I noticed, I took my tire, got tires at Midas. And the week before, I talked to Steve there, the manager, and they had no work. And then they're totally slammed right now because people got their checks and they're fixing their cars. And and I know that my employees that have gotten the $1,200 checks have appreciated them. And they have been, they're being. and I know that my employees that have gotten the $1,200 checks have appreciated them, and they have been, they're being spent for the most part. And so I know that when they had the, um, the 11, um, uh, recession and, I mean, not the 11, the '08 recession, that there was, um, a significant funding, uh, approved for shovel, I remember the term shovel-ready projects. Is that, that's a term, right, Sean?
Absolutely, and we, we have had a lot of success in having shovel-ready projects over the course of the bills, the stimulus accounts and so on, and we're there today. We're ready if there's additional funding made available.
Well, I think we were all surprised to get our $5 million. Uh, I don't see anybody thought that was coming. I think, you know, we, we were owed three, I think, because of the OU reimbursement, blah, 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 we got five. And so would, if we were to move forward, this is the answer finally, Anthony, I'm coming around to answering your second question, which is about doing the A and E, uh, on these various Norman Forward projects. And so not that they are highway projects, but you just never know under circumstances like this, you know, where, where the man is going to fall, you know, and so if we, if there's all of a sudden a call out for shovel-ready projects, um, even for public works projects like the ones we're talking about, where we're talking about building swimming pools and, and, um, and fields and, uh, baseball, you know, all the different things of Norman Forward, a senior center, um, if we, would they be more shovel-ready if we were to move forward with these A and E, uh, spending?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Well, I whole, I wholeheartedly embrace that, you know, I look for, um, I have not been disappointed in the federal government, um, stepping up to fund us, disappointed in their preparedness for, um, um, a pandemic, uh, and not having us enough virus isolation swabs and masks and things like that. But they seem ready and willing to do the things, um, that government and business has asked of them. Um, I, I love, uh, the mayor's letter that, um, she, uh, was very graciously allowed us and other council members to join her with. It was an eloquent, well-written letter, and I, I loved what was written in the newspaper, uh, today about it, and, um, I look for it to be, uh, something that can be used. I think it'll motivate our, our state government leaders and our federal leaders to start to do the right thing. And so while times are scary, I'm optimistic, and that's all I got to say.
Okay, I believe Councilmember Scanlon is next.
I'll try to be brief. Uh, first of all, compliments to, to Sean and his management team, uh, for, uh, uh, so many of these projects coming in, uh, under budget. It's really saving our bacon now. I think that's a big deal. I noticed on one of the slides and talking about big deals and coming in under budget. Uh, since Chief King took over, uh, he's done a really good job of managing apparatus. We've, we've changed what we've ordered, uh, and, and tried to make better use of what we buy, and, and his, uh, purchases have consistently come in under budget. I think that's, that's quite something. And, and along the line, we better posture ourselves for the ISO audit that's about to happen to us here in the next few weeks. That matters a lot in terms of, of consequent, uh, fire insurance city. A couple of the things that showed up, uh, that relate to fire while I'm on fire, uh, no pun intended, uh, was, was a vehicle for, for, uh, lights and power and a boat. And these seem trivial, uh, except that as, as, uh, I think Anthony mentioned, the idea of having light capability when you're firing, uh, fighting a fire at night is a big deal. I think that the consequences, uh, the positive consequences of having that kind of matters is important. I've, I've had occasion to go out in training with the fire department on Lake Thunderbird. They've got a couple of Zodiac boats that are okay in some situations. The boat he's asking for, as I understand it, will, uh, facilitate, uh, better rescue capabilities. Right now, if we use a Zodiac to rescue somebody, uh, on the, on the lake, we have to commandeer, uh, somebody's local bigger boat to transport that person. And that doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me. Also, I understand the boat that he's talking about has some fire suppression capability. So we could take, for example, uh, if a houseboat caught fire, we can fight it with that boat. Not a big expense. Uh, I think significant benefits, uh, that, that come from it. To answer, uh, a couple of the questions, uh, and, and, uh, Councilman Carter just, just brought up the A and E for the Norman Forward projects. I think that having the plans in place helps us. I, I think that's a wise investment, and so I'm in favor of it. I'm also in favor of the, the $2.1 million programming that we're talked about to make the fire and transit maintenance facility a reality. We can't not do that. Having said that, uh, I have a question in terms of, uh, other, uh, projects on the North Base, specifically storage facility. Where does it come down in all of this? Does this just go away? Does it become a part of, uh, one of the bond issues? Where, where does that stand?
It would probably be a combination of both. Um, there is some remaining funds in the public safety sales tax that would be used toward that project, and we would probably use some of the general obligation bond money, assuming it's passage toward the completion of that facility.
And as I understand, that's plus or minus a 900K proposition. Uh, you may have different figures. That's a figure that I've heard. And, and I think there are benefits if for no other reason than, than, than storing vehicles in hoses outside necessarily sun damages a lot of equipment, and it's a pay me now or pay me later proposition in terms of, of conserving some of that stuff. So that, that, uh, it's not an expensive proposition. I just don't want us to lose track of it. Obviously, the maintenance is more important, and I'm happy to see that that's being treated, but I didn't want to see the maintenance or the storage facility go away. So thank you. That's it.
Now we have Councilmember Petron.
Hello. Okay, um, my first question, thanks, everybody. By the way, it's I'm seeing that the weather's coming in, so I don't know what it's like out there, but if our feeds are jamming up a little bit, I think that's probably why. Um, my first question was about the ACOG funding. Um, Mr. O'Leary, I, I saw that we got some. Um, can you tell me how much for which projects?
We did, Councilmember. It's, it's in one of your slides there. Um, first thing I'll mention is, I'm looking for that number, about 4.9.
Yeah, a breakdown for how it.
Yeah. About 4.9 million total. Uh, we had hoped for about 10 million, so we're, um, the, the good news is we got some. We didn't get everything we wanted. The projects that we got, um, there's four.
Sorry, Mr. O'Leary?
Yes.
One second, I gotta grab my, my charger. Go ahead, sorry, 4.9.
Right, about 4.9, just, just south of $5 million in federal funds, four different projects. One, the primary one is the Robinson I-35 project there on the west side of the interchange. That's about $4 million. Um, we did get a transit bus replacement. That's our first one of those. Uh, we got a pavement marking program to enhance our pavement markings in the urban areas. And thank you for this question because I wanted to, to correct a previous misstatement I made to Councilmember Beerman. We did get funding for the Alameda Summit Lakes Boulevard, uh, traffic signal project. A hundred percent funding for that, $217,000. So four different projects, total of about $5 million. So he doesn't.
Please send me an email about when we can expect that to start, so I don't take up.
Happy to, happy to follow up with some more details. I'm sorry about my senior moment earlier. I went, I, I went back to my notes. I'm at my desk, so I went back to my ACOG file. Um, all these funds become available October 1st, so we will plan on bidding all four of these projects in October. Hopefully that means quick turnaround on construction, but I think you'll see a new signal there, um, around February of '21. The working signal.
I appreciate that. And I know Midway Bob will as well. He's been waiting a long time for that signal.
It is 100% funding, so that's the other good news.
Found my charger. I was afraid it was gonna knock.
We can talk later about what to do with that $80,000 in terms of sidewalk repair in near Kennedy.
Okay, so, good deal. So, uh, four and a half, went to Robinson Crossing, what was?
The federal funds are about, yeah, Councilmember, the federal funds are about $4 million, matched with about a million in TIF dollars for about a $5 million project.
Okay, um, we have 788,000 as well that we've put away, um, for the Robinson Crossing, um, placeholder in the budget from last year, too.
I think Anthony can speak to that question better than I can.
I just looked at it earlier.
That's, that's part of the 1.4 million dollars of TIF money. Some of that has already been used toward the design, so that's probably what you're seeing there.
Yeah, as a placeholder, we have 788,000 for the last year. In fact, it has 788,000 every year until 2025.
Uh, those are the TIF, that's the local match. So we're using that 788 to match this federal grant.
Okay, um. So we have it budgeted from last year out of TIF funds?
Yes, it was actually, um, the year before that, but it's been, you know, spent down.
Always a, designing. Was it always a UMP TIF project?
Hmm, yes. It was allocated, uh, it was identified in 2007 for the first time.
Okay, oh, I actually do remember that because you said you'd pulled the money out a long time ago, and so that was our portion that was allocated.
It just took, the project became more expensive than the original scope, and it took this long to get the federal funding resource to make up the $5 million total.
Okay, but that money is, our side is secure and then we're getting, so the dollars and cents are done for that.
That's correct. Yeah, you will see a, uh, you'll see a formal version of this in the way of an ODOT agreement, uh, council agenda. Don't have it yet, but it could happen around June or so. So you'll see the final contract with, with ODOT, accepting the $4 million in federal funds and dedicating the 788 and local funds for the final project. Um, as Anthony mentioned, the goal here is to bid the project in October. The funds become available October 1st, and, um, if, if, with, with a good bid opening, we could be under construction as early as January of 2021.
Okay, great. Um, Mr. Francisco, I kind of wanted to follow up on what, um, Councilmember Beerman asked about old projects and money left in them. Um, are there other old projects that are still out there that we haven't, that have money sitting in them?
Some with strings attached, yes. We had tried to avoid the, the projects that, um, were bond funded. We tried to avoid the projects that were matching funds for, for federally funded projects. But, but we think that we have kind of cleaned things out. We did a full audit of, of the projects that appeared to have funds that had not been closed out, that had been dormant for several years. And, and that's where we came up with the funds to, to match the federal money for the transit facility.
Okay.
Did that not include, um, pushing out some projects too?
Yes.
Okay, would you mind providing counsel with the copy of that audit so we can see what projects, old projects are out there that have funds in them since?
Yes, ma'am, that's, we're still working toward that. We, we're still, some, some things that we believe that would be proposed to come forward in that agenda item we have to talk to the project managers about to make sure that the funds are in fact available, like you heard, um, Sean talking about that Lockwood project that, that he thought the money would be needed for that. Uh, we learned later that it was not. So sort of things that we'll be working toward as we prepare that agenda item for council's consideration.
Thank you. I just, even the ones that we're not using, I didn't, for this agenda item, I just would like to see what, what projects, what old projects still have funding left in them.
Yes, ma'am. The agenda item will have the full list of projects that are supposed to have funds transferred to the maintenance facility.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm saying over and above that, if there were other projects that were not using funds from, for the maintenance facility, if there's anything else out there in the books that is old projects that have funds left in them.
Given the criteria that we were using to come up with these projects, we kind of cleaned out the bucket. Um, now, as we move forward, you know, some other projects will close out that might have some funds left over. Um, and, 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 and this is an ongoing exercise that we'll be doing and that we have done each fiscal year.
Okay, yeah, um, I'll just reiterate, whenever you have the audit, I believe, I'd like to see that. I'm sure other council members would as well. It'd be interesting. Um.
And, and again, Councilmember, I, what, what I have told you is that we are confident that we can come up with the $2 million. But there will be an ongoing negotiation, for lack of a better term, with the project managers to, to say, yes, these funds are indeed available. Yes, this project is, uh, a priority that we can push it back for a year or two or three, um, and make those funds available for the maintenance facility that we need to do now. So, so that will be an ongoing project as we move this agenda item forward for council's consideration.
Okay, I'm not trying to get into the weeds with old project managers. I'm just trying to understand, like, where in years past projects that were done, where the money, if there's money still left in funds, how much is, is it that's nickel and dime out there in different nooks and crannies? I commend you for pulling together the, the funds for it. This is an important project, and I'm glad that you're able to scrape together those pennies. Um, so I wanted to go back and just, um, revisit with, because I've been losing a little bit of sleep. I want to make sure I understand, um, from the conversation that we had a couple of weeks ago, because I think it probably applies here as well. Um, under the general fund, if the UMP TIF goes into a appeal, will this year that we're in right now, um, June 30, 2020, will we end in the red if those increment is not flowing back into the general fund by June 30th, 2020?
We would have adequate fund balance to absorb the $3 million or so loss of funds that we expect to have coming from the University North Park TIF Fund. But we also expect that we will have a shortfall in revenues that we had been projecting. Um, but, but between now and the end of this fiscal year, particularly from sales tax because of the COVID effect. Because of the actions that we have been taking in council's direction since January, we believe that we have been in a pretty good fund balance position to absorb the COVID effect. But if we have the double whammy, if you will, of the COVID effect and the petition appeal, then we probably would be in the red instead of in the black. We'd have major problems.
Okay, um, can you predict how much that would be? I mean, I know that the COVID effect is difficult to predict, but since we're.
It's impossible to predict. We won't have hard data until May 10th, June 10th. But, um, for example, Russell Evans, our economist consultant, when he did some work for Oklahoma City, he said you might expect a 20% um, month-over-month reduction, um, in June and, and May. If that were to come to pass for us, we'd be talking in the range of those two months of about, in the general fund, about $800,000. That would be very difficult to absorb. Um, so, again, the, it's unknown, but, but it's not, it's not a positive, we'll put it that way.
Okay, is Mr. Pyle?
Yes, Your Honor.
Um, a couple of weeks ago, I had encouraged that the city, um, get the parties together and sit down and, and virtually discuss, um, what sort of agreement that they might be able to come to. Um, I mean, on the one side, I know it's 4,070 voters, um, that are wanting to vote, but there is one person that is a figurehead for, like it or not, for those voters. That person gets to decide if they, if are going to, if the voters are going to get to appeal or not. So it seems that rather than having us sweat, um, bullets between now and June 30th, that perhaps we could sit down with them and see if an amicable resolution could be reached? Is that something that has happened since then?
It did. As a matter of fact, the developers from the University North Park project were watching our budget conversations and made contact with us the next morning, indicating that under the current COVID-19 environment, the retail development opportunities have dwindled, which greatly diminished their desire or willingness to negotiate away further benefits that they were eligible for under the original agreement. So we lost a little ground in our negotiating posture, just based on what they believe that environment will be going forward for them to further develop out the UNP property. So that conversation did take place almost immediately following the conversation with, with zero interest and participation from the other party at the table.
Okay, so they feel like that they don't see a future in creating the Lifestyle Center?
Um, I, I, I think they recognize their road forward is, is more challenging now. And they're, they're comfortable with the deal that was renegotiated. They were comfortable with the original deal. But they don't, they don't see any advantage altering either one of those two current paths.
Okay, so I guess what I would say, from, from everything, have we reached out to the, to the party that is representing the voters?
We have not.
Okay. Um, so maybe one of the things when we talk to the party that represents the voters is, you know, discussing how expensive litigation is. That might be something that's worth discussing on his side of it. And then maybe on the developer's side of it. If this particular deal falls through from contractual impossibility, because there are other dates in that, that also for that contract particularly expire June 30th, that the city won't be able to meet its obligation in that contract. They would be reverting back to clawbacks that were very unfavorable to them. So, under the 2008, or the most recent amendment, that's not this one, not the 2019 one. So, um, I don't know. I just think that maybe they haven't considered the ins and outs that the city might, could be able to explain that there are parts of that contract that are supposed to be satisfied by June 30th.
And let me ask the city attorney to respond. She was also in conversation with the UNP developers. Ms. Walker, what are your thoughts?
Well, you know, there are a lot of dates in the agreements that were negotiated last November that are going to be difficult to meet. Given this, this time period we've been in, both just sort of in a holding pattern. And, and, you know, potentially the coronavirus effect. I have had conversations about the deadlines that apply to our projects in the 2019 amendments, and I think that that is, is something that everyone's recognizing would be hard to meet. We haven't talked a lot about the deadlines in the original project plan, as was amended in 2008. Or any of those prior development agreements primarily because I think their representatives feel pretty confident about the ruling in the district court striking down the petition. And so I, I don't think they're particularly concerned about having to go back to those agreements. I think they believe the 2019 plan would stand. I did talk to them about whether or not they would be willing to sit down with all the parties. You know, we aren't a party to that lawsuit. They aren't a party to that lawsuit. So it's a little awkward, but they would definitely be a necessary participant and able to get, you know, in order to be able to get anything negotiated because the agreements are with them, the project plan affects them. And they were not willing to do that. They, they feel strongly that, you know, over the last year and a half, 10, 10 months pretty heavily over the last year and a half, they spent quite a bit of time and legal fees and effort trying to negotiate a deal. And so I think they feel pretty strongly they'd like to stand on that deal. They believe in the deal. And I don't think anyone's saying that, that they aren't going to move forward with some kind of retail. We just, no one knows what that looks like right now. So to give an incentive up from their perspective would be a pretty hard sell at this point in time.
Well, in all fairness, going back to the one before, the incentive is eight and three quarters million. It's not like they didn't, wouldn't have an incentive.
Right. I mean, the deadlines would have, would pass. We would have to renegotiate those likely just because of the, the in these amendments and then waiting on this court ruling and the COVID-19 effect and all those things. So I think that would be something that would have to be renegotiated. But I think they feel pretty strongly, you know, that they want to move forward with the 2019 amendments. They're excited about the Norman Forward project, just like we are. And they're, they're ready to move forward with those.
Okay, so, yeah, there's deadlines in the 2019 amendment as well, though, that I was talking about.
Right. And like I said, I've talked to them about those deadlines. I think that's something we can easily work on, given the, the sort of state we've been in of just kind of waiting for an outcome in the court case.
Okay. So basically, we're just still in a holding pattern and still, that's, no one wants to call them and see if that's something that you want to sit down and talk about?
Call the parties to the lawsuit?
Yes.
I don't know what I can offer them if the other parties to the agreements aren't willing to negotiate with them or change the deal they've already agreed to.
Okay, well, I mean, that, well, I mean, that, at least, I guess, I'm glad that I asked because they wouldn't have known even that. So I guess that's where I'm going with it. At least they know now that. Okay, so my understanding from a thread that I was reading is May 15 is the new deadline for them to file for an appeal?
Yeah, there's, yeah, go ahead.
Is that correct?
Yeah, there's some, there's a couple of different opinions about how that court order gets interpreted, but, but I believe it's May 15.
Okay. And then having not been familiar with a time when the court has closed like this, I can only assume that the way that everything has backed up, that it will go in order of the way things have been. So the most, in other words, the most pressing matters that got put on hold are going to be, and the ones that have been, that were in the queue first when it went on hold, will be heard first, likely.
Um, I, I don't know that to be true. I, I think some, one of the things we are looking at and, and representing the city is, is there something in the case of appeal that we could file to help the Supreme Court decide that case more quickly? They retain original jurisdiction on initiative petition challenges and referendum challenges at the statewide level. And, and they turn those around really quickly, and that's something that we really want them to do in this case as well for our budget. So we've been looking at options to, for that. We've made some contact through a mutual contact trying to, with the court administrator, Jerry Askins, to try and figure out if there's a, a way to, to move us to the top of the pile, I guess, is the best way to say, say it. And get some urgency from the court's perspective in deciding this. They had a, an opinion that looked at a very similar issue and that the district court heavily relied on just in January or February. So I think they're really familiar with this issue. And I don't think it would take them long to deliberate. It's just a matter of making sure it gets on the top of their stack.
Okay. Um, and what was the feedback when you asked that as far as where?
We're still working, yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt. We're still working those, those contacts. So I don't have any feedback yet, but we are, that's something we're working on.
Okay. Um, all right, well, I would just say that the only other piece of advice maybe for getting them to settle amicably would be that it really would be a settlement versus another council can just overturn any other TIF project plans and amendments and all of that. That's just under the Local Development Act, where this really would be something that they could get something that's a legal settlement. So they, that might be worth something to them. So. Um, I was, I'm, Mr. O'Leary, I'm glad that you brought up the bridge replacement because that was something that I was, had written down in my notes that I was sad to see that we didn't have any. I'm really concerned that we have so many that are and dilapidated disrepair that we were talking about that are dangerous. My ward is intimately familiar with that. If there's any way that we can be at least doing one a year, I think that would be helpful.
Thank you, Council. Right. Couldn't agree more. We, we're shooting for every opportunity we can in federal funding. But again, realize that we are talking about a multimillion dollar problem here. A, a single bridge can be three or four million by itself, and we have 19 of them that need attention. So this is a big problem to solve, and we're going to need a big solution to solve it. Yes, we can do it one at a time or two at a time, but it's still going to take tens of millions of dollars to get there. We are 20 years behind schedule.
So on that note, any chance that the feds like matching funds on bridges?
Well, we, we're working that angle. And unfortunately, the way it works in a metropolitan planning organization like ACOG is that we could apply for bridge money, but that would mean that we wouldn't get the road money or the bus money or the signal money. And so when you, we're making choices every year. Norman has chosen not to pursue bridge dollars through that program because we, we had other priorities that we, the council felt like we had. So I think that's something to talk about. We need to think about, do we want to forego all these road projects and just do bridges? Or can we have a blend of the two? That's, that's, there's federal money. Some cities use it for bridges. Norman has used it for road projects and sidewalks and paths and so on. So it might be time to change that formula.
I would point out that there is a $500,000 allocation proposed and, and in the five years projected going forward. Now, just as we know that there were not allocating enough for fleet replacements and we're not allocating enough for sidewalks, we are allocating something. So, so just know that that program is in there.
Okay.
And just a reminder, we had talked about including the bridges in possible, the road maintenance projects. Is that still happening? Because that, that seems like as, hopefully it continues, our, our property tax grows and all that fun stuff. We have a little bit more flexibility to kind of tackle that from that angle as well.
That was certainly part of council's discussion in February. And we would be going back forward for that five-year renewal next calendar year, so.
Okay. Um, moving on to the A and E contracts, who has those contracts?
I know that PDG has the contract for Griffin. Judd may be able to, to rattle them off quicker than I can.
Yeah, Howland Van Curran has Ruby Grant. FSB is the, the team that has the multi-sport and aquatic facility and the senior center. And Half Associates has Reeves Park. And, oh, and, yeah, Howland Van Curran has the football softball, too. I think that's all of them.
Okay. Um, so, I mean, I think I made my point on this last week. I don't really see the manna from heaven just falling. So I think that it's going to be something that the voters actually have to approve as to whether or not these projects are going to go forward, with the exception of Ruby Grant. I didn't understand why that one was on there with the no pencils down date. I wasn't sure what that was about, but, um, so I think that we have to, we have to send this to the voters and ask them, do you want to raise your property taxes to have this vision of Norman Forward, which is an awesome vision, and we're going to definitely say how awesome it is. But I think, just like the COVID effect in every other area, people are feeling the COVID effect in their own wallet right now. We have 22 million Americans that are unemployed. I don't know how much that translates to Norman in particular. But I do know that everybody is feeling the squeeze. I can't wait to get my stimulus check. Haven't gotten it yet, though. Be sure nice when they decide to send it. For that matter, I'm in the same boat for small business funds. It's, that fund ran out. So we're in a holding pattern for small business owners, waiting for relief. So I feel like whether it's small business owners and they're going to be paying for their properties, higher property tax on their brick and mortar businesses or houses, we're asking the voters to open their wallets, and hopefully they do. And hopefully they decide, yeah, it's going to be, I feel like, they'll either be re-employed or that the economy will, you know, turn around. But we also have gas futures that yesterday were trading at negative $37 a barrel. So if they say no, we've just given up over $600,000 because we couldn't wait two months before we got the answer from them to say yes. I feel like this is their money and it's not our money. And if anything, if they do say no, the pennies of Norman Forward, talk about, you know, squeezing pennies every place you can find them, we're going to wish we had that $600,000 to put towards the projects that we have to give as best of an outcome as we can for the, for Norman Forward projects. So I feel like the responsible way to go is to be patient and let the voters tell us if this is what they want to do, rather than chancing having fancy drawings that are sitting on a shelf. Um, and to be honest, right now, I'm going to be shocked if they pass. If, if, I hope they do, but I will be shocked under today's economy and uncertainty. And even more so in the state of Oklahoma, there are a lot of people here who are affected by oil and gas. And I just, I think that our eyes might be a little bit big right now and not really taking into account what's happening economically in our state and in our city if we think that bonds are a slam dunk, because I don't at all. That's how I feel about those two, but I, I definitely, on the fleet maintenance, I'm very supportive of that. I, and I'm, I don't even see the reason in asking for more bond money if we've got capital funds that we found in dusty corners to make up for the money. Let's just use the money that we found. I agree for the same purposes of what I was just discussing with Kate on the golf carts. I'm not sure that I understand the revenue producer. I would like to hear more about that because I don't, not sure how their revenue producers, if that's for having to buy new ones. So, I mean, is, are they making more than, than what they cost? Anybody know?
They do. They make a lot more than they cost. That's one of our, our largest cost centers or revenue centers at the golf course operation.
Okay, so why would it come out of? I mean, why wouldn't it just get paid for then out of its operating fund?
Well, because the operating, the, the.
Well, because the operating, the total operating costs have not or the revenues have not met the total operating costs all total up until, for the last several years.
Okay. Well, anyway, for the same reasons what I was saying with COVID, I just, I feel like we need to really be watching our pennies and if that's seems like a want, I'd like to see if we can get another year out of them. And I think I think that's it for me.
Okay. Mayor, I don't see any other comments. Councilmember Wilson had some questions and comments, but she had to jump out of the meeting. So Anthony, she will call you tomorrow with those questions.
Okay, I've heard mixed comments on the direction that we need to move forward. I'm hopeful that, and I'll ask you all in terms of the finding the funds to move forward on the center that we, or the maintenance facility we know we need. And we will see that, I'm seeing thumbs up, head nods. Okay, I think we can move forward with that. And we will have an opportunity to discuss that in more detail when it's an actual agenda item. He just didn't want to catch us off guard. Councilwoman Holman, are you raising a hand?
Yeah, I would just, the part that struck me the most about the A and E contracts is the shovel ready part, that doing this increases our opportunity and chances of getting an outside additional funding for these. And I think having these plans ready, even if they're sitting on a shelf until they could be approved. Even if they're not approved, if the bond isn't approved, we still have these plans. And we will move forward with building the Norman Ford projects with the funds we have. That's one thing we got to remember is all of these projects have already been voted on and we're going to do them regardless of whether voters say yes or no in August or whenever. We're going to build these facilities one way or the other. They just might not be as nice or as big as people want, but we're going to do it. And it'd be nice to have the plans ready to go so that maybe we can get some outside funding. So that's what really struck me. I think that's why I do feel comfortable supporting, going forward with those plans and having them ready for whenever the time comes, whether it's in August, November or next year.
Excellent point. And Councilwoman Scanlon, look like you want to jump in and say something before I turn it over to you. Councilwoman Carter, I don't see him, but I feel like that kind of summed up his comments as well. So just kind of reminding everyone what he said. Councilmember Scanlon, go ahead.
No, I'm just in violent agree with what Stephen just said, that having the plans is, it puts us a step ahead whenever the funding becomes available from whatever source. It just makes good sense to me. And the fact that having worked contracts once upon a time, if we let things terminate, the A and E contracts terminate, we at some point have to start them up again, perhaps at additional cost. It's probably cheaper to do it now than later. It just, everything Dick says to me that we go ahead. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Biermann.
So I, I mean, I will say, it's not that I, it's not that I disagree with Stephen or Bill at all. My big worry is the money. That is a lot of money that we don't have accounted for in any other way except through this GO bond and $600 plus thousand on top of, you know, whatever shortfall we're going to be experiencing from coronavirus. If the referendum isn't sorted out by the end of the fiscal year, that's another significant financial hurdle to overcome. It's not that I don't think that these plans are worth having, even if they do just end up, God forbid, just put on a shelf for the time being. But we're already facing a really difficult budget situation and I just don't feel comfortable spending an extra $600,000 without the guarantee that we're going to be getting the money to pay for that. The last thing I want to have to do is justify $600,000 in cuts because we couldn't wait two months on engineering plans to ensure that the money was there. I don't, I just don't know that I can justify that.
Well, we had mentioned that the aquatic and multi-sports facility, that wouldn't be done till August. We won't have an answer till August. Anthony, if there was one where we could find a compromise, because the other ones we know we're going to move forward on, is that the area to compromise on?
Yes, that's certainly something council could choose to do. Just move forward with all of them except the indoor multi-sport and aquatic center.
I mean, honestly, I'm with Councilwoman Holman and Scanlon and Carter. I'd like to see us be ready to move forward and I'm a little bit more optimistic. But we also have to be realistic on top of being optimistic and perhaps that is the compromise in this situation. Does that seem a little bit more palatable to everyone?
I would feel more comfortable with that. I would just like to know what we expect to cut if we don't get the money. You know, I feel like I have to have the full picture. I have to be able to say, yes, I went into this and voted for this knowing that if we didn't get this GO bond, that we would be cutting one of these five things or five of these five things.
Councilmember Biermann, that's one thing that I would point out is that these are design costs of the project. It's just a matter of the timing. And we would be moving forward at some point when we move forward with the projects to final design them. And that's what we're talking about. So the costs are there in Norman Forward. It's just a matter of when you would be moving forward.
Okay.
We wouldn't be short this money if we, let's say the GO bond didn't, didn't pass?
No, ma'am. It's just a question.
Better. I was thinking that money had to be there for the actual extension of the contracts.
Because you have to be able to, Norman Forward can't afford these projects on the scale that they're being designed. They require a GO bond, so.
For example, so for example, where we're talking about the indoor aquatic center and multi-sport facility, Norman Forward has a $22.5 million budget for that project that includes design costs. So you would be spending some of those design budgeted costs to move forward with this A and E contract amendment. Now, it is a fact that if the bond does not pass, then we would not be able to build the facility that we hope to be able to build.
That they're designing right now under these contracts.
But the cost of the design is part of the Norman Forward budget as it exists.
I might add too, if you don't mind, Mayor, that design, A and E design contracts that are listed here, it does not get you all the way to construction drawing design. These amendments get you past, get you to schematic design, which is further down to where you can fine tune the numbers even a little more. And then the pencils would go down until you, the vote happens and before you move on to detailed drawings and construction drawings.
I guess, I mean, that's exactly, ultimately, the answer still is that for what they, we are asking them to do at this moment in time assumes that we're going to have funding for a larger vision. We've said, here's what the ad hoc committees have worked up. This is what, you know, they would like to have. This is what quite frankly, the community would like to have. The monkey wrench in all of this is COVID and negative $37 a barrel on futures. That's what, there's a couple of major economic monkey wrenches here. And so these numbers right now that we have told them, the direction that we gave them and that they're assuming is what the ad hoc committees have put together and that we would like to be able to ask the voters to fund. If the voters say no, then yes, we have to go back and redo these. This isn't going to, this is, it would be off the wrong lane. We don't have the money if the voters say no to build what we've just told them to give us these A and E drops.
But again, I feel like the biggest conflict here is the most expensive one, which is the aquatic center and the multi-sports facility. I'm willing to compromise on that because that is very different based on whether or not that bond package passes or not. So I mean, I'm hoping that can be the compromise we need to continue to move forward on these. Would it delay us two months in the entire process if we don't move forward now? Like, let's assume the best and the bond package does passes and we have the funding to build the full vision. Are we now two more months behind on that facility because we didn't move forward now?
It's actually about three months. The, the, if you, council desires to move forward with the A and E contract amendments, most of those would be on your agenda probably in May, the first or second meeting in May so that work could continue. If we wait till after the election, you wouldn't see those on your agenda until September because the election is at the end of August.
Councilwoman Hall, you want to weigh in at all?
Well, I, I'm really struggling on this one because I, I see, I really understand the points that Councilmember Biermann and Councilmember Patron are making. But I also feel pretty strongly that we keep asking citizens to represent and recommend what they want on these ad hoc committees. And that's what they've done. And you know, we have, we have a big vision and it's really hard to tell right now what the climate is going to be if we decide to move forward in August. And that's, you know, that's still a big if too of whether we're going to move forward or not. So I don't know. I just am really struggling on which way to go. I think that if it is built into the design process and into the budget and we are obligated to go forward with these projects one way or the other. And I think the worst possible thing that, you know, I'm trying to really weigh what the reality is going to be by August because I think it's going to be, it was a big ask anyway, under the best of circumstances. It's a big ask, but I think it's something that, you know, most of these projects, the voters have already told us what they want. And we are not currently able to provide what we want. So I, I feel like we probably should go ahead and, and move forward and be ready because I think our community would be very disappointed if we have to just throw our hands up at some point and say, well, we're just going to build what we have money for, when that's really not the vision that our community has for the end result. So I'm not sure when this is all going to happen, but I think it's going to happen at some point. And I think it's part of our hope for the future of how we're going to come out on the other side of this. And so you know, Mr. Francisco, you seem to be pretty successful tonight at finding nickels and dimes that add up to $2 million. So, you know, if it comes right down to it, I guess we're just going to have to count on you and keep digging around in dark places to.
And Anthony, we trust.
Yeah. So.
Councilwoman Hall, that was very well said about planning for the future and we know what they want. We've asked, it's going to be up to the election, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't be ready. Councilwoman Scott came back on. She was, I think, watching on YouTube and I would love to hear your thoughts on if we should move forward on continuing designing the Norman Forward projects, even though all of this is going on and we have an election pending in August. And to clarify, the design money is in the current budget.
I just want to say too, I'm sorry, Councilwoman.
Okay, if the, if the design money is in the budget and I mean, is it based on whether or not the bond election were to pass in June?
No, the money's there anyway.
Then, and these are for Norman Ford projects that people voted on, we have it budgeted. Correct? Then I'm going to move forward on that.
And Councilwoman Hall, you were going to add something?
Oh, I was just going to say, I, I could, I could live with that compromise too if, you know, we wanted to prioritize the projects. So that's all.
Okay, so we're now moving forward. It would seem if we're doing a more cautious approach and taking out the multi-sport facility and the aquatic center. I, I was ready to compromise, but Councilwoman Hall's comments kind of got me like, well, we know what they want. Let's design what they want and hope we get there. I guess my question would be, if it doesn't pass, will it cost us more money to redesign it? Because otherwise I'll wait.
You, you probably, go ahead, Anthony.
No, I would have to defer to the engineers on that question.
I'm not sure I understand the question if.
So if we spend the money to, if we spend the money to design a $38 million facility or whatever the number was, and then the bond doesn't pass and we have to go back to the smaller facility, will it cost us money to redesign it with the money we do have?
Man, that's a tough question. I would say we're between now and, and August, we're talking about just the next phase. I don't think we, I don't think we do anything that we have to backtrack much at all between now and then. If we, if we get into the final design phases, then I would say, yeah, that's going, we're going to have to redo some work at a smaller scale, if that makes sense. I don't think between now and August, we're going to get to that point yet. At least not very extensively or not. I don't know if, if Randy is still on, he was on earlier, he may be able to help me with that. But I'm not sure we, we lose much at all or spend much that we don't have to between now and August. I think if we went further, we probably would.
You know, Randy had to jump off, but I would agree with Judd, just because we're going to schematic design. We're not getting into the detailed drawings yet or the construction, final construction drawings. So there may be a little bit that would have to be tweaked, but not to the extent that you're starting over. If that makes sense.
Then proceed. Does everyone seem good with that? Head nods?
Kate, Kate and Lee has, both have their hands up. Kate was first.
I, I think that was old. I don't think I put it up.
Okay. Okay, sorry.
I, I mean, it still makes me a little nervous, but knowing that the funding is coming out of the existing Norman Forward budget and isn't directly tied to a successful GO bond makes me feel a little bit better. I am still worried that we would have to, I don't, I don't feel like I got the super clear answer that I was looking for, that if the GO bond fails, will we have to redesign the multi-sport and aquatic center? Or are we going to decide to just not do it until we have the funding to build what we should build? I think, I think this is a conversation we'll have to have before, before we decide whether or not to pass a GO bond onto the voters. Because that's a concern for me. And so that's my big worry is that with some, the one that has the biggest price tag, should, you know, should we be spending money on continuing with a design that we don't know that we're going to have the money for? Because what's, what's our plan B going to be? If it's going to be put it on a shelf, I think it's perfectly fine to move forward with the plans for it. But if we're going to have to redesign it, I'm not so sure that we should be spending the money on it.
And you already answered that question.
Okay, Councilmember Hall has her hand up. And just to remind everyone as well, the, we will continue this discussion next Tuesday at the council conference beginning at 5:00. The GO bond discussion that we started last week, which will also include coming back to wrap up this if, if there are further comments on it. So Councilmember Hall.
I, obviously, all of these projects are important, but I think you all know that I've really been laser focused on the senior center for a variety of reasons. And I just wanted to point out as an example, because of my. And I just wanted to point out, as an example, because of my familiarity with the senior center project, that, I mean, we have, you know, a design plan for a senior center project that fits the budget that's avail, that is available at the moment, that no one in the senior committee, in the senior community, it doesn't meet their expectations. So I think we need to take that into consideration, too, of having designs for projects that does not meet the vision of the community.
Fair point. I just want to say, we've had a very nice, robust discussion on this, despite going to like four hours. So well done.
We'll say heavy storms are coming.
Yeah, and I'm starting to lose my connectivity. I don't want to rush it, but I feel like everyone's had a chance to speak their piece. If there's anything else to add, Anthony, do you have the direction you need?
Yes.
Now, you're heading.
Yep.
Yes, ma'am. I have clear direction. If I can just unmute.
And everybody hurry home because of the storms are coming. Oh, wait, already. We aren't.
Raining here. It's already started raining in my house.
See, whatever, Brenda lives there now. Just admit it.
Yeah, get home safely, staff.
I can see it on my front porch camera.
I'll be up watching the storms if anybody wants to join me.
But remember, if you have any additional comments about your, your thoughts on reboot Norman, anything you're hearing that we didn't have time to discuss? Because we did have two big items on our study session agenda. Please email that to me. I think I did send an email to all of you earlier tonight, and I'm going to send a follow-up on with the interesting piece of information. I may have sent it, that I was looking at earlier. So I'd love to hear your thoughts. You know, this is a once in a lifetime opportunity to handle a pandemic correctly, and I really hope we don't screw it up. So with that, have a lovely night. Stay safe, everyone, and we will talk soon.
All right. See you.
We had to stop the YouTube.
I did.
No, no, because it's still says it's live.
It stopped recording.